Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We have four board members in the room. Lisa Baraccio, Andrew Jennings, and Sam Stivers, and myself, Chelsea Melonowski. And Ms. Cook may join us on Zoom, and so we will look out for her. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:00 o'clock PM. And our first order business is a very exciting scholarship award that we get to present at the Select Board Meeting every year. And we have five recipients receiving awards this year, and Isabel Markey is going to
Take photographs.
Take photographs of all the recipients. So I'm just going to have each board member is going to present one or two recipients, and we're going to say a little bit about them and where they're going to school. And then they'll be presented with that award, and then the next one will go.
If you just can present it right here.
So I have Owen. And so Owen, if we could just make sure we're towards the owl when we speak. So Owen's going to Northeastern University. He can come on up, and he's going to major in computer science and business admin. He was a Science National Honor Society member, a Science Olympiad. Olympiad, okay. And you tutored Fin students on computers. So congratulations to you, and he's a recipient of $500.
You want to send it?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Congratulations.
Is it that you want a picture of mom and dad are here too? With Chelsea as well? They want to step forward?
Yeah, and then hopefully we can get after
Sure.
Hold up your meeting, maybe you'll ask all five That's great. If they can take a photo outside.
Perfect. So don't leave when you're done.
Okay.
Check and run. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, if I could have, oh, Andrew, you're next, sorry.
Sorry, Andrew.
So I would like to present a second award to Mia Gorman. So congratulations, the amount of this scholarship award is $1,000. And Mia will be going to UMass San Peters with the intention of studying biology. Is that right? And Mia has been on the National Honor Society on the gymnastics team for four years and was the captain most recently. And is also outside of school worked at a lead gymnastics. So congratulations, wish you best, and I'll present you with this certificate scholarship.
Thank you.
And a check.
Yes, please. There we go. Great. And if you guys stick around, let takes him outside too. All right, now it's my turn.
Yay.
Julia Hayes, if you'd like to step forward. This one is near and dear to me. Julia is getting the Linda Hugley Scholarship. And many people in town know the good work that Linda did. So this is a tremendous honor. It is a $1,000 scholarship. Going to Berkeley for musical and music education. She's a Musicians Inspiring Challenge. She created volunteer group focuses on making positive impact on community through music. She's in the Jazz Band and Music Honor Society. So Julia, congratulations to you on all your fine work. I present you a check for $1,000. And your certificate is welcome. Get a picture as well. Congratulations on that. Oh. Thank you. Next up is Joanna Dance. Well, I know the family, I'm very proud. So Joanna, congratulations, you're getting a town scholarship of $500. You're going to the University of Southern California for occupational therapy. Congratulations. You are in dance and athletics in school. So again, for Joanna Dance, we congratulate you. And I'll reach the bar up. Thank you so much.
Present Caroline Scholarship Award here. Caroline is going to Brandeis next year, education. Elementary education. Maybe she can back into the teacher at some point. She's a parent and leader. She's four years senior team captain, and she's been kind of hawks as an assistant. So it's a great, great pleasure.
Thank you.
Last little, please, check.
Congratulations to all five of you, and thank you to the Scholarship Committee, all your members for your hard work on pulling this together and taking all the applications in and evaluating and, you know, working on the funding that you all put forward. So thank you very much, all you are. Thank you.
Love to take the dress out of that South Borough sign. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You so much. Have a good night.
And Ms. Cook has joined us on Zoom, so hi Cathy. Hopefully.
Hello.
Okay, great. And before we get started tonight, I just wanted to acknowledge and pay tribute to Dorothy Fannin, who passed away recently. She was a town employee for 28 years or so as a member in the Board of Selectment Office and also the town accountant. So condolences to her family with the passing of her. Okay, and just one order of kind of administrative. If anybody in the room wants to speak, could just come up to the table, just because the owl is here, and I just want to make sure everybody can hear at home. And Cathy, if you can't hear anybody, if you can just interrupt us, I don't think you have a problem with me, but anybody else? Oh, great. Thank you. All right, so.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. So we'll go to public comments. Yes. Why not? Yeah, you can say it, sure.
Hi. Patricia Burns, Yorktown Winchester Street. This afternoon, this morning, I sent a letter to the Select Board. Given its length, I'm not sure if you've had time to read it, but I would like to read part of it into the public book. And I promise I'm only going to read the first page, the letter part, and not the additional six or seven pages. Dear Ms. Cook and members of the Select Board, over the last several years, with an especially dramatic increase this year, the taxpayers of South Borough have expressed numerous concerns regarding DPW management, town employee Karen Galligan, the DPW's use of funds and allocation priority of projects. All have received no response and policy remains exactly the same. The superintendent's employment contract is up for renewal at the end of this month, and our understanding is that all negotiation on this contract has occurred in executive session. Thus, the true employee employers of Ms. Galligan, we, the taxpayers in South Borough, will not know the details of the contract until it is signed and in effect after 6:30. I'll add an addendum, it was posted as part of the packet today. Therefore, we feel it is important to let the Select Board know our thoughts now on the operation of the DPW and what we see as the errors and egregious behavior that has taken place without repercussions. Further, we wish to have input on how projects are prioritized. Please understand this letter is not just for me. The following list of issues, concerns, and projects is sent to you on behalf of dozens of concerned taxpayers with names removed, and they might remain anonymous. Although the comments I received may only represent a small minority of this town, not one was positive regarding the way the DPW is run, how it spends our money, the way it is overseen, or the actions and decisions of the superintendent. I urge you to take these thoughts of South Borough taxpayers, the people who elected you to represent them, into consideration when you place your vote on continuing the employment and contract of our current DPW superintendent. South Borough can do better, and we should. And then it follows with six pages of comments that I received from members of the community. Sorry to their concerns.
Thank you. And the virtual room wants to speak to public comment. If you can raise your hand, and I'll pull you over after people in the room. Yeah, so this gentleman will go, and then we'll go to you. Hi.
Hi, my name is John Tobin. I live at 6 Stockwell Lane, been resident for 20 years. Sam, I saw at the transfer station the other day, and I really appreciate his time sitting there just to listen to questions and concerns to represent the town, because those of us who are crazy busy at work don't have time on a Saturday to spend his time. So thank you. He recommended I come here today. The sidewalks in front of my house are horrendously buckled. It's not okay. I first contacted the town almost two years ago, September 14th. I have a myriad of emails if anybody wishes to see them. Was told it was going to Town Planning Board, then, and I don't know how our government works here, then the Town Planner, then the DPW, and they couldn't decide for a few months who was in charge of sidewalks because the town had built this 25 years ago, and then I guess it moves over. You guys understand it, I almost don't want to. Then I was told it was going to be addressed, and the potential solutions, working with Karen Galligan, I guess, remove the sidewalks and not replace them. She asked me to canvas neighborhood, we have emails and stuff. They absolutely want it, we got a whole bunch of new people in there with small children, and they want sidewalks to walk to the pasties as you guys can look. This is right in front of my house. That is my wife after major foot surgery, she can't walk down our own street. So it's been two years. So Lisa, we spoke last August, I was on vacation, I remember where I was, I was at the beach, and it was very helpful. But still, to this day, I've had no response. The solutions would be to, Karen, maybe cut all the trees down on one side of the street, which is basically ludicrous, but this, when you drive down the street, it's gorgeous on both sides. The trees were mandated to be planted there when they built the neighborhood. So Eric Osswald, also an AK Santa Claus, who's my kid, Lance, is a neighbor. He contacted one of the people, he does this Bartlett tree, to see if those trees could survive. If the roots that are offending in those pictures were cut, the answer is yes. So we got a bill, a bid, to do, once the sidewalks are removed, to cut the offending roots and put the sidewalk back. Like I said, I was asked, absolutely everybody wants the sidewalks. My kids are in college, so I'm good, but that's, that is bad. Was asked to recommend, so what needs to happen is we need to remove the sidewalks, cut the roots, and put back a sidewalk. If they're surgically done, they're okay. Like I said, I can leave any emails or anything. Sam had mentioned on Saturday that the town has received several million dollars for projects like this. I was told by Karen, and I, you know, back and forth for two years, as we spoke. I just don't know how it works, I don't know what needs to occur. But I run 70 retail outlets for a living, and if somebody came to me and showed me that you are so liable for anything that happens, especially if you've been notified, and you know it's a dangerous situation to not fix it, it's my taxpaying money too. We're, we're in trouble, we just don't fix it afterwards. So I don't know how it works, but two years is a little long for this. So I hope that that money has been allocated. I hope the sidewalks on my street, Fitzgerald and Stockwell, are being fixed. And I've already done most of the homework on what needs to occur to do with the way you're at. So don't know the next stop, next step, but Sam said to come and let you guys know. So you guys tell me, what, what do I do? The pictures speak for themselves.
So this isn't listed on our agenda tonight, but we will certainly take note of it, and somebody will follow up with you. Cathy, Cathy's our chair, and she's listening. So her, her eye will work on next steps for this. And if you don't mind, if we can keep the, because you show the pictures, I just want to make sure we have it for the record.
Sure, please. Do you want the Bartletts?
Sure. If you have that as well.
And then I'll just leave my name and number on a piece of paper.
That'd be great, yeah.
And then whatever you guys want to do. But I just, I want to make sure that that money doesn't get allocated without, you can't do much more than, you can't walk down my own street. Anything else I need to?
No, if you can write your name and your phone number or email address or whatever.
I'll get it all.
And just leave it with.
Thank you, again, Lisa, thank you, and Sam, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to just, first of all, talk about.
Name and address, please.
That's right. I'm Chris Robbins, I live on 39 Parkerville Road, and speaking on behalf of myself as a resident. And I just want to compliment this board the last time. Marika Munzat was sitting here, and you were all thanking her for the exceptional work she has done. And the two most important words in this town and anywhere, a thank you. And conveying that is so important. And one of the items, and each, I, there was, I think, Gordon who spoke in a very complimentary and appreciative way of the good work she did. One of the things mentioned was her grant, but we didn't talk about how much. She, she, and with others here in the town, Mark and others who helped on these application for grants, brought in over $323,500 in grants. And when we're talking in this town about all the services and the cost of doing business, I think that's an extraordinary achievement. And she led the way with others, including Claire Reynolds, who was doing a lot of the grunt work to enable that to happen. There is currently an application for $80,000, which takes this grant level up to over $400,000 if that one comes in. And just as a highlight, we had $50,000, or four, $50,000 Executive Office of Energy. Now, this is working with the state. And I think a lot of people in different committees don't realize they have access to state resources that these grants come from, the Executive Office of Energy Environmental Affairs Planning Assistance Grant. That was the timeframe around when the zoning bylaw passed. And the zoning bylaw, everybody says, oh, we gotta, we gotta vote. Are you kidding me? It took almost three years to educate and get information from citizens and residents to put that zoning bylaw together and to collaborate with the planning board to enable that to happen. That was a Herculean effort, and Marika was the force keeping all the, all the energy going with the EDC and other committees to enable that to happen. So that, the town deserves an enormous thank you for that very, who had passes in zoning bylaw these days. It's very difficult, and all that homework that she led the way with, along with others, enabled that great event. Then we had $24,500 for the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. In addition to providing funding for planters, picnic tables, and bike racks in the downtown outdoor spaces, how to make the downtown beautiful and attract people to come to our community. The most important part was funding during the initial COVID period to provide tents and portable heaters for restaurants to enable them to stay open and residents to enjoy outdoor dining. That was a lifesaver for a couple of our restaurants, so we're grateful for that. $204,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Micro Enterprise Grant. Here we provided and assisted 11 businesses with up to $25,000 in emergency grant funding for each of these businesses to keep their businesses going and pay their staff during this really business downturn. I can't tell you how many businesses I've met, including a brother who lives out and has his own business. Everybody was slammed, and this kind of boost really made a critical difference to and sending a message to the business community at large that we support you, and we're gonna, we're a part of the team to overcome these great challenges we've been facing. And currently, we have a $45,000 grant in process from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and a Planning Assistance Grant. Now, that's 320, 3,000. Now we've got an $80,000 grant that was submitted in May. And that is to fund a zoning review of Route 9. This is a part of the collaboration process, is of identifying issues, wastewater, infrastructure, zoning, financial incentives, outreach, et cetera. And the decision is expected in the late form. Again, over 400K in grants, and I just, I just want to say, we have avenues to bring in more funding if we just get creative and take advantage of these resources this state is trying to provide. And I want to say thank you for all the support you gave her, the EDC, on these critical issues. I wish you all, oh, the only other thing is, to the audience listening, we have a vacancy, and it's going to be hard to replace Marika. And so we're looking for people to acknowledge the posting of the, there's got to be some revisions made. There were some complications getting out the notice, but we're looking for support from all of you and everybody in the town to find a worthy replacement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room that's above my comment? Anybody online, please raise your hand if you have anything? Thank you, everyone. Okay, our first scheduled appointment is the Town of Hopkinton indirect connection to MWRA Water. And Mr. Purple, do you want to keep us one up?
Sure, I can give a brief introduction of this. Excuse me, in the room tonight, we have William Kamala, who's a town manager from Hopkinton, John Westerling, who's the DJW Director, and also Richard Bush, who is the Chair of the Select Board, I hope I didn't butcher that, and also Tim Tease, who is our water consultant this evening. There have been some preliminary conversations, you know, over the last several months. Hopkinton is looking to find a way to connect the MWRA to find a more sustainable source of water for their community. We had done this previously with the Town of Ashland to help them provide a resource. And Mr. Tease has, has worked on that product as well. He's been working with Hopkinton to try to see how we could make things work for Hopkinton, also to protect and, and potentially improve, you know, our water situation here. So I'm not going to jump on your thunder at all, I might get a little bit of hesitation. But the purpose tonight is to get the board to get an understanding of where we sit. This is not something the board is being asked to decide on this evening. This is simply an informational meeting, and if there was an outcome tonight, it would simply be to take another step forward to our communities, you know, continuing to discuss this and hopefully moving, you know, towards a memorandum of understanding, should we feel that doing this is beneficial to both. So I'm not sure who wants to, who wants to lead off. Probably with the instructions, the owl, you know. It's your friend.
Vanessa, can you make Chelsea co-host?
Okay, thank you.
We're going to play on the screen, so everyone can see them.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, thank you, thank you. We've already done the introductions. To my right, Emeryta Bush, she is the Chair of the Select Board in Hopkinton. First off, let me thank the Select Board here in South Borough for placing this matter on your agenda. Thank your staff, the Town Manager, Mark Pavel, and the DPW Superintendent Karen Carrigan for their time and effort helping us in understanding how to proceed with this request. Specifically, Hopkinton is seeking a new permanent connection indirectly to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority through the Town of South Borough. And tonight, we have a two-part presentation. John Westerling, Hopkinton's Director of Public Works, will explain the need from Hopkinton's perspective. And Tim Tyes, our Consulting Engineer from Power Engineering, will provide the technical details on the project. And Amy and I will be here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Tell me when to go to the next page.
You're good right there. So Hopkinton's water supply is not sustainable. Our existing sources combined with water that we purchase from the Town of Ashland are insufficient to meet the needs of the growing community. And Hopkinton has no other viable water sources. All of our wells have manganese, iron, and/or PFAS. Filtration of the water sources is an option, but that has double the capital cost for us as opposed to connecting to the infrastructure of the MWRA. It's difficult for us to maintain water levels in our storage tanks during periods of drought, which affects our fire, equalization, and emergency storage. Periods of drought require that we reduce the amount of water that we pump from our sources due to groundwater water levels dropping in our aquifer, so that compounds our water supply issues. NASTEP's Water Management Act permit will further reduce the amount of water that we can pump from our aquifers, and that also will compound our water supply issues. Ashland's connection to the MWRA provides no benefit or additional water to the water supply that we can purchase from them. And all of these factors will worsen as a result of climate change. If I may have the next slide. Connection to the MWRA will provide a sustainable, safe, and reliable water supply to meet the town's essential needs into the future. The water will meet all of DEP's public health standards, and it will be resilient to climate change and droughts.
Thank you. My name is Tim Peace, I'm an engineer with Par Corporation. I'm actually the Town of South Borough's water consultant, and I was engaged by Hopkinton to assist them with this because as the South Borough's consultant, we have a lot of insight into South Borough's water system and how to make this kind of project move forward. So when we set out to, to help Hopkinton with this issue, right, we knew that we were going to have to wield the water through, through South Borough to Hopkinton. Right, South Borough has physical connections to the MWRA system. Hopkinton, there's no MWRA infrastructure in Hopkinton. So we knew we were going to have to make connections or buy water from South Borough that was originally purchased from MWRA. So when we set out to do this project, our first goal was to make sure that we could do this without having any adverse impact on South Borough's customers. Right, South Borough's customers pay for their water, we don't want to see a reduction in service to those customers. So that was our first goal. We also set out to see if we could use this project as an opportunity to make improvements in South Borough system. Like South, like every system, South Borough has needs, it has capital plans, it has a master It has capital plans. It has a master plan for improvements that they're gonna have to make in the future. So we took a look at this project and said, is there a way for us to take this project and use it to the benefit of Southborough as well as Hopkinton? So to physically move the water from MWRA to Hopkinton, all right, and we plan right now to make a connection on Cortigo Road at the town boundary in the southern part of town. To physically make that connection and actually supply water, we're gonna have to make some physical upgrades to Southborough's system. And those upgrades include increased capacity to both your connection points, right? That's the Hosmer Pump Station and the Boland Pump Station. Those are the two places where you buy water from, from MWRA. We're gonna have to make water main upgrades in the system to help us actually transmit that water from the northern part of town, which is where your connections are, to the southern half of town, where the connection to Hopkinton is gonna be. We're gonna replace the Oak Hill Storage Tanks, which is one of your, one of your three existing storage tanks right now. And I'll explain that. That's a big benefit to the Town of Southborough. I'll explain that. And if you're interested to see that tank, that is the photo on the cover of this presentation is the Oak Hill Storage Tank. We're also gonna eliminate, as a result of this project, we're gonna eliminate four pressure reducing valves that the Town of Southborough has right now. And those are mechanical features in your system that they provide a function, but they are also something that requires maintenance and replacement over time and something that we would prefer not to have to work with if we can. And we're gonna use this as an opportunity to get rid of those. We're also, we're gonna install, and this is a smaller project, but we're gonna install a new pump station, a very small one, at the, in the Skylar and Fairview Drive neighborhoods to increase, increase pressure in those neighborhoods. And there's a lot of reasons why we're gonna do that, that both benefit that neighborhood and fire protection in the area in general. And so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about how these projects, those goals we're listed, the projects that we're gonna do, how these projects really benefit Southborough. And I'm gonna do this in ascending order. I'm gonna start with the projects that have a benefit, but a relatively small benefit, and work up to the projects that are really significantly beneficial to the town. So the first upgrades, the first projects we're talking about are upgrades to the pump stations. So as part of this project, we're going to essentially remove all of the existing piping, pumps, and mostly the electrical in those pump stations, and we're gonna replace it with all new equipment, right? Because we need to add capacity to those stations to serve Hopkinton. So what Southborough is gonna get out of this is all new equipment in those stations, electrical, mechanical, control equipment, which is a real significant benefit to the town, although these are not necessarily high priority projects for the Town of Southborough because we just recently upgraded Hosmer about two years ago. And about eight or nine years ago, we upgraded Boland. So they have relatively new equipment in them right now. In the timeframe of this project, it'll be probably a couple of years before we actually make these upgrades. That equipment will be two years older. So it's not going, like I said, these aren't high priorities for the Town of Southborough right now, but it will result in new equipment, which means extended service life for those stations for the Town of Southborough. All that cost that will be paid for by Hopkinton. The next improvements we're looking at are the water main upgrades. So we're looking at about a mile, a little bit more than a mile's worth of water main upgrades in town. And these are gonna be happening in a few different areas of town. And what those water main upgrades will do for the Town of Southborough, while they help move the water to Hopkinton, they will also improve circulation in the Town of Southborough and your existing pipe network. Because we're talking about removing smaller diameter, older pipes in the system that are currently bottlenecks in the system. So we're gonna remove those with larger, newer pipes. These pipes will also improve fire protection in the areas where we're doing that work, right? Because we'll have larger diameter pipes, we'll have more flow available to us in those areas. So this is gonna improve fire protection in certain areas of town. And then, like I said, these pipes are generally older pipes that we're removing. I would, I would refer to these pipes as sort of medium aged pipes and they're, they average between thirty and sixty years old. And in the water system, the water business, that's not a very old water main. We expect to get about a hundred years out of our water mains when we put them in the ground. So it's not critical that we replace a thirty or forty or fifty year old water main, but it will benefit the town by increasing the service life of that type network, right? You'll essentially be getting brand new pipes in those areas. And then the last set of upgrades, the last improvement we're gonna talk about, these are the ones that are really significant to the Town of Southborough. We're going to replace the town's Oak Hill Water Storage Tank, right? And this is about an eight hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank that sits at the top of Oak Hill Road. When we replace it, we're gonna replace it with a taller tank that's about twenty-three feet taller than the tank that's up there now. By doing that, we're gonna be able to eliminate the two pressure zones that the town runs at right now. So the town currently has what we call high service area and a low service area, right? Essentially, it splits the town down the middle. The western side of town is the high service area, the eastern side of town is the low service area. And low, low service versus high service, that doesn't have anything to do with pressure. It just means that the, the topography, the elevation on the west side of town is a little bit higher than the topography on the east side of town. So we call the east side the low service area and the west side the high service area. But because of that change in topography, when the system was created many years ago, they put the storage tanks in at two different elevations. Taller tanks for the high service area, shorter tanks for the low service area. And as a result, we have to split the town down the middle and we have to run it like two servicers, essentially two mini systems within your one system. What we're gonna be able to do is we're gonna match the elevation of the high service area tanks with the new Oak Hill tank. So essentially, we're gonna run the system now as one pressure zone, one big system rather than two smaller systems, right? And that's gonna allow us to eliminate those four pressure reducing valves that I mentioned earlier that split the system. Those valves allow us to move water from the high service area to the low service area right now. But with that, with this change to the system with this taller tank, we won't need them. We can move water freely between the two areas without any pressure reducing valves. So we're gonna be able to eliminate those, which is a, a maintenance headache for the town. We're also gonna add, by adding twenty-three feet, we're gonna add about ten PSI's worth of pressure to the, the customers that are in the low service, low service area right now. And generally, you know, ten PSI is not a huge amount of pressure, but it's generally well received when we add a little bit of pressure to the, to a system, right? It means that your, your shower has a little bit more pressure. You're able to fill up a container of water a little faster from your sink. Your, your hose will reach a little bit further. So ten PSI, it's not a huge increase, but it's enough that I think people will see a, a nice bump in their pressure. It will also, and this is not to get too far in the weeds on the hydraulics, but in the future, in the, in the long-term future, when Hopkinton is drawing its, its peak demand from Southborough, there's some customers in what we call the low service area now that might see a small dip in pressure, not a very significant dip, about ten PSI when they're drawing all that water. So adding about ten PSI to the system now will offset that pressure reduction in the future. If we add ten PSI to the low service area, we're gonna improve fire protection in the area, the low service area right now. All the hydrants are gonna have a little bit more pressure behind them with a little bit more flow available, a little bit more delivery capacity at those hydrants. So we're gonna be able to improve fire protection in the low service area of town. And it's really gonna help in certain areas where, I won't say the town is, is deficient in fire flow, but it's lower than what we wanna see in certain areas of town. And this is gonna help to, to improve that. In some areas, it's gonna rectify that entirely. It's gonna put us up over that threshold where we wanna be for fire protection. It's also gonna help us deliver water to Ashland. We have a commitment to Ashland to deliver a million gallons a day. Having a little bit more pressure on that side of town, which is where their connection is, is gonna help us move water to the Ashland connected, the connection easier. So it's gonna, it's gonna improve our ability to get water to Ashland. The current tank right now, in that photo that you see, it's a long standpipe, it's a tall standpipe. There's a lot of what we refer to as unusable storage in it, meaning that the water at the bottom of the tank is, is at an elevation that's too low to really be usable to the Town of Southborough. Meaning that the town really only uses maybe the top twenty or thirty feet of that tank. That tank right now is eighty-five feet tall. And we can only really use the water in the top twenty or thirty feet because once it, once the water level drops below that, we start to see unacceptably low pressures in parts of the, the low service area. So we always have to keep the water above that, above, you know, an elevation about twenty to thirty feet below the top of that tank. So when we replace that tank, we're gonna reconfigure it so that it's not a standpipe, right? We're gonna put all of the storage at the top of the tank, which means that we're gonna take all of that space that's unusable right now, we're gonna eliminate it. And the tank is gonna be a hundred percent usable right now, which is gonna go a long way for the town, I mean, the Town of Southborough storage requirements. So we have, we have known for years and we have been planning for a long time to make improvements to the Town of Southborough's storage, right? This was something that was contemplated when the system was first created. As a matter of fact, the town actually purchased a piece of land back in the sixties on which to put a new storage tank. And so it has been, it's been something that we've been looking at for a long time. And it's because the town runs right now at what we refer to as a storage deficit, meaning that the town is operating with a little bit less storage than what we would like to see a town of this size have. And a lot of it has to do with the unusable storage that I was talking about. And a lot of it has to do with system demand and fire protection requirements. But in a perfect world, we would add storage to the Town of Southborough to get them above where they're supposed to be, total volume wise. By putting a larger tank up at the top of that hill, we can eliminate that storage deficit entirely for the town. We can take care of South, of, you know, Hopkinton's storage requirements as well as eliminate that deficit for the town so that the town has all of the storage that it currently needs. And that will eliminate that future project where we were talking about maybe adding storage in the future for the town. That would eliminate the need for that project. And this is where we get into some of the nuances of hydraulics, but right now, the town has three tanks. And two of them are in the low service area and they provide backup to each other. In case I have to take one of those tanks out of service, I can do it and have the other tank provide storage for that area. But Tara, which is the tank in your high service area, has no backup. So the, the plan has always been to add a second tank to the high service area to provide backup for Tara and to also take care of that storage deficit. By putting this tank in taller and matching the elevation of Tara, we no longer need to build a second tank in the high service area because now this tank will serve both needs. It'll serve the customers that it currently serves and, and what we call the low service area. We're gonna get rid of that term because it's gonna go away. And it'll provide backup to Tara, right? So we will no longer have to build that tank in the hot service area. And then lastly, we may be able to, and this is one point we're still evaluating, we may actually be able to eliminate your overload tank, which is the smaller of the two tanks in your low service area right now. If we size this one sufficiently, we may be able to eliminate that tank entirely. So what, what that does for the town is it goes, it moves you from a scenario in the future where we had expected to have four tanks in town and four tanks are expensive to own and to, and to maintain, right? You have to paint tanks every fifteen to twenty years. If you have four tanks in your system, you're looking at painting these tanks on average every three to five years at a cost of about a million gallons or more per tank. That's a tank project, not all the tanks every three to five years. It's a tank every three to five years, right? So these are expensive to own and they're expensive to maintain. So we're talking about moving from a scenario in the future where the Town of Southborough has four tanks to maintain down to just two tanks to maintain, saving the town quite a bit of money in the future on operation maintenance costs. So there's a lot of benefits to the Town of Southborough to raising the elevation of the Oak Hill tank and replacing it with a bigger tank and which is one of the, the key upgrades as part of this Hopkinton project. So I'll end with, you know, a couple more points about this project. We're gonna, we're gonna phase this project and we're gonna sequence construction in a way that minimizes disruption to the Town of Southborough, right? There's, there's a lot of work in this. There's a lot of work to be done as part of these capital projects that I've, I've outlined here. We're gonna sequence them such that the town sees no disruption in service. You're not gonna see any disruption in service when we're upgrading the pump stations. You're not gonna see any disruption in service when we're replacing the tank because we have means in place, we'll have means in place to, to provide temporary service when that's happening. When we're doing the water main work, we may have to do a very short duration shutdown while we connect customers to new pipes, which is typical of every water main project that's, that's ever been done. As, you know, somebody's connected to an old pipe in the street. We replace it with a new pipe, we have to reconnect that customer. So that might result in a short duration, a couple of hours of shutdown for that customer while we make that change. But really, the impact will be very, very minor, right? So that's how this project is gonna get designed and phased in the future. And then the investment that, that Hopkinton is looking to make in this system of all these projects is upwards of around eight million dollars. And then includes hard costs and soft costs. So hard cost being the infrastructure, the soft cost being the engineering, design, and permitting costs that are along with that. So quite a bit of investment in Southborough's system as part of this project. I will leave it at that.
Great. Thank you very much. I think we'll just go around on the left board here for questions. And please, if you want to start.
Sure, that's great. Thank you. Um, the, what do you expect the peak demand to be? How many gallons from Hopkinton?
Good question. So we're planning right now for a peak demand in the future of two point eight, excuse me, two point seven million gallons per day.
It's almost three times as much as Ashland.
Correct.
Okay. And, um, I took a pause, see, did you put that on there? So you talked about the equipment at Hosmer and Boland. And what is the typical lifespan of that? I think you said, correct, it would be like five years or something?
So the, it varies per piece of equipment, obviously. But generally speaking, we expect to get thirty years out of all that equipment that we put in the station, right? So we're talking pumps. You'll get more out of the piping. The electrical, you'll probably get about thirty years out of. The controls, you might not get as much time because that technology is constantly upgrading on the controls. But generally, we'll say thirty years on that.
So for, for, we're roughly what, what would you estimate in the two pumping stations as far as how many years into the thirty hour?
So at, at, at Boland, we're about eight to nine years into that thirty.
Okay.
And at Hosmer, right now, we're about two years into it.
Okay.
And keep in mind, this, like I said, this project will happen in probably a couple of years. So at that point, you know, everything will be two years older.
Correct. That was, that was my next question. Okay. And when you do replace piping, I assume in the eight, nine dollar savings number you built into Southborough, it's repaving the roads that are dug up and, you know, so it'll be a seamless for Southborough. Okay, and so the tank currently on Oak Hill is eighty-five feet, did I read it correctly?
It's about eighty-five feet, correct.
Eighty-five feet now. Okay, so we'll be looking to, that's it for now.
So just in terms of the, the timeframe so is this something that would be a project that need to be approved by the town meeting? Hopkinton, there's a certain timing to that and you're coming to the Southborough Select Board to see whether there's interest in exploring this before you take that next step. I mean, this is pretty a preliminary discussion of this. I'm just trying to get a sense of what is kind of the timing, but is the framework in which we're gonna think about this?
Pips, by way of introductions, what, we're looking at this as an informational session. We would like to give you time to digest the information and then we'll come back for, for our discussions. We are looking forward to receiving many, many questions from your team. And as I said earlier, we've been working collaboratively with your staff and we will be churning our responses through there. In terms of specific timing, there are several components to, to this project. And I'll let the engineers talk first about what may happen in Hopkinton. But for your information, at the last May town meeting, we received funding for the design of the project. So that is in place. And that's why we're able to come to you with some of the information that provided. There will be additional approvals locally within Hopkinton and you agree here in Southborough alongside state level approvals.
Correct. So the, we're expecting the, the design and permitting piece because the, and the permitting piece is gonna be significant. There's a lot of permits that we're gonna have to get to make this work.
Except for MWRA?
We're gonna have to, you, you name the letters and we're gonna get them. We have at least two MWRA permits that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to seek as well as a formal agreement to connect to MWRA. We'll have a number of DEP permits that we're gonna have to get. Every project requires a permit. The pump stations require a permit. The tanks are gonna require a permit. We're going to have to do a meter filing and an interbase and transfer application through the state. Depending on where this physical location of these projects get cited, we're gonna have to do some local permitting, maybe with the conservation commissions in each community, depending on where this work actually happens. So there's a number of permits that we're gonna have to get. And those, that permitting process happens in parallel with the design process. You know, we do some design, seek some permits, move the design forward some more, seek some more permits. I mean, so we expect that that design and permitting process is gonna take between twelve and eighteen months to complete. Our hope is that we can be pursuing this with, with Southborough while we are also moving in parallel with the, the design and the permitting piece of it. Just to keep the project moving because as, as John mentioned, the water supply is fairly critical in Hopkinton and, and we don't want this to, to languish too long. But like I said, we're hoping to move everything sort of in parallel.
So I wanna allow other time. I'm sure Sam is on the MWA, MW. So I wanna allow other time, I'm sure Sam is on the MWA, MWRA advisory. Maybe he has some advisory board, sorry, has some informed questions, but. So just two, two others. So in a scenario like this, if it's approved, I assume there's some type of pretty complicated. Inter municipal agreement that governs how this works, is there? In such an agreement, would the town of Southboro have, for example, its own type of project engineer or project manager that would, you know, looking at the quality of the work as it's done? Just independent of Hopington would say, I'm evaluating this quality of the work and the design as something that meets, you know, Southboro standards. And are there, you put in a new station, does it also come with things like warranties with it? And. You know, another issue is increasing the the height of the tank is something that potentially has an adverse effect on. Property values and sight lines in that immediate neighborhood. And from your experience, are there ways that as part of this project? That those. Adverse impacts can be mitigated in an arrangement with this.
So. I'll speak to the adverse impact, so what we would do with it with the project with the tank project, because you're right, you know. People may notice a a tank that's twenty-three feet taller than than it is right now. So the first thing we would do is we would go out there and we would understand exactly what that height is, we would actually do some visual realizations for folks so they could actually see it. You know, actually float a weather balloon or some other physical thing up there, so people could actually see what the height of that tank is and see what the actual. You know, how far away people can actually see it. That's a fairly well wooded site and it's fairly well off the road. So it provides some nice screening right now. So we'd have to take a look to see how well that, how effective that screening would be with a taller tank. But then in terms of of mitigation, again, we could take a look at additional screening around the tank. We could take a look at color, color makes a big difference when you're putting, when you're putting up a new tank. Surprisingly, you wanna, not surprisingly, but what you would think of as the color of the sky is not always what the color of the sky actually is and we would paint it to match what people would see from the distance. So it's actually a very, a very light color would help to, I won't say camouflage, but help to blend it in, so it's less noticeable. So we would take a look at those things for sure. Your question about warranties, yes, all of the equipment in the station and all the new equipment that we purchased all has manufacturer warranties for it. And so that all will be collected on behalf of the town of Southboro to make sure that you guys have all the warranties for that equipment. And then I I believe your, your first question was, oh, would somebody be overseeing this on the town, on behalf of the town?
Independently.
Independently, so the way we actually worked this when we did the actual connection is, again, since par is the town of Southboro's water consultant. We actually were out there every day during construction for the work that was happening out there, looking out for. For Southboro's interests, watching the construction happening, making sure that everything that got built in the town of Southboro would be built to the town of Southboro's standards. So yes, the the town of Southboro, again, will be out there during it, but if the town felt that they wanted a totally independent third party in town, could could obviously engage somebody to do that. But I I emphasize that we were brought on because we are the town's Southboro's water consultant. So we're here to to make sure that this project has no, no impact to you folks.
Thanks, I have a few questions and a comment, I guess. One, just interested in some of the mechanical details here, what's the capacity of the new tank? It's at eight fifty thousand gallons for the current one.
So the current one is is about eight hundred and fifty thousand gallons, but not all of that is usable, right? The new tank, we're estimating right now would maybe be about three quarters of a million gallons. And you said, well, that's smaller than the tank that's out there right now, except that one hundred percent of that volume is unusable, whereas only a small fraction.
And will the form factor, the new tank basically be a pole with a blob sitting on top of it to get full utilization?
So we, so we refer to that as a, as an elevated storage tank and it would be a version of an elevated storage tank.
But that's basically a cylindrical, small cylindrical pole essentially with the tank sits on.
Correct, also, all the storage is concentrated in the top thirty feet or thirty-five, forty feet, so, correct.
In terms of the utilization of gallons per day, how many, what's Southboro's current utilization?
So South, let's go back, so Southboro utilizes in the summer right now about two point three to two point five.
So it doubles, basically, to draw.
Correct.
Actually, actually.
Yeah, so it's about two point three, two point five for Southboro. Ashland adds another million gallons of capacity. And you may be interested to note that the pump stations that you have right now have about five million gallons of capacity in total. So there's some extra, I say extra, some unallocated capacities, right?
And the new times pump stations will even have more cushion. In terms of the piping that's gonna be replaced. It's a mile of piping.
Correct.
But it's a lot farther than mile to the Hopington interchange point, right? So we've got capacity in the system current.
Correct, so your, your pipe network right now, it's, it's fairly robust. You have a lot of looping in your, in your system, which helps us to move water around. We have done some other upgrades recently that helped some upgrades on Route Nine that have, that help your capacity. And so these are very targeted places where we're making new connections, where connections don't exist right now, or we're removing smaller diameter pipes where they're bottomed.
So I guess I'm interested in getting a sense of how much disruption from a construction standpoint, there's gonna be in terms of water mains, people are obviously concerned about digging up my street and noise and dust and so on and so forth. Where is that gonna occur generally in terms of new pipe construction on, on streets?
That's a good question, so some of it is gonna happen down at the physical interconnection, right? So down on Quarterville Road, there's a couple of streets and side streets that feed to that area, a couple of this a little bit short. So we're gonna connect those side streets and and make that connection there, so there's some of that piping is gonna be there. Some of the piping is gonna be up near the Oak Hill tank, right? Because the Oak Hill tank is gonna want to, as I've mentioned, this is gonna be a critical piece of infrastructure for, for this project. And we wanna make sure we get the water out of the tank to the connection, so we're gonna make some upgrades near the Oak Hill tank. And then a big piece of it is gonna be on Parkerville Road. So Parkerville Road right now is a, a main north-south connection in your system. And it's a little bit undersized, so we're gonna wind up increasing that.
This is Parkerville, north or south of that?
Uh, south of it.
Too bad, Parkerville North needs repaving, so. I can't roll that in. So Hopington's total draw then will be through this connection.
Correct.
Once it's made, correct, okay. I have some more questions down the road here, but just a comment that I assume you're aware that MWA is is very eager to sell more water in these decks. And I certainly can't speak for MWA, but it's my expectation that Thursday, the advisory board is gonna make a recommendation to their board of directors to waive the entry fee. For new communities, new water communities. And I have no idea what yours might or might not be there. The MWA board of directors may or may not agree with that recommendation. But if they do, that could create a significant financial impact and if you've not been following that, that would be interesting to stay connected with. MWA has about twenty-five million gallons a day of excess water. And they're now dumping over the dam spillways, which is unfortunate. And there is a, a strong push to actually sell some portion of that water where they can in reasonably convenient places where they don't have to build a piping truck and pay for it. So that actually affects the economics of everybody in the system. If you spread the fixed cost to promote more ratepayers, that's a big bonus. The other push is that the communities who did pay the entrance fee are. So I say excited about the prospect of, wait a minute, why do those guys get in for free if I don't kind of think? So that conversation has been heated and going on, but I would guess there is a reasonable chance that that entry fee may be waived, but that's something, again, that we were following pretty closely. And hopefully that'll be resolved in the next several months here, but we'll see. So that, again, if you haven't factored that into your economics, that would be something to take a look at.
We, we have factored in the connection fee, but we are very eager to to find out the outcome of that.
So overall, I think it's a great project for Southboro and, you know, if we can deal with the aesthetics of the tank. You know, rotating beacon for aircraft on top of it or something. Not be popular, I guess, I don't know how, how high you have to go for those kind of things, but it sounds like those are, it solves a number of interesting engineering problems. Hopefully, we can keep this moving, thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have any questions at this time?
I do, and I don't know why you can't see me anymore, it says the host doesn't wanna see me, that's why you can't see me.
We didn't wanna tell you.
So anyway, but I can hear you fine. So I'm, I'm gonna go back to something that Ms. Brascio brought up a second ago. So when we talk about eight million dollars of cost to Hopington to do these things. We're not saying that we're necessarily saving Southboro eight million dollars, correct? In other words, we wouldn't necessarily do every one of these. In the very near future.
Correct, correct, you would not necessarily do these, like I said, the the pump station projects are not a high priority. You would do them someday, you know, thirty years, we'll say, but not immediately. The water main project, you may do some of these in the future, but again, they're not, these are not super high priorities for the town of Southboro. The tank project, the tank project is something that we wanna discuss with the, with the town further in terms of potential cost sharing there. Because it does solve so many of the town of Southboro's issues. But this would be a project that Southboro would get at a deeply discounted price.
Okay, well, that was actually my next question because on the memo we got, it didn't say Hopington was gonna pay for the new tank. So you're saying Hopington is not saying they're gonna pay for the new tank.
Well, we're hoping that's something that we can, we can discuss with the town about potential cost sharing, but. Like I said, it would be a project, this tank storage issue is something that the town is gonna have to address at some point here in the near future. And this is a way for the town to do that at, like I said, at a deeply discounted cost to the, to the town.
All right, so there would be a cost to Southboro of something if we were to go forward with the whole project as has been outlined. Yes?
Correct, yep.
Okay, Mr. Purple. Have we had any issues with the Ashland interconnection? Are we happy with it? Are there any regrets as far as that one goes?
I've not heard any issues with it. I've heard nothing from Ashland and I haven't heard that there's been any issues on our side of the operation either.
My last question is, one of the references in the memo was to building some type of structure over by on Skylar?
Correct, so that, that would actually be not so much a structure, but a, a small booster pump, an inline booster pump for that neighborhood to improve pressure in that neighborhood. And so that neighborhood, yeah.
You know, the neighborhood. Has been opposed to a new tank over there, so when you say a booster pump, what, what does that mean?
So what it would be, what you would physically see if you were looking at this booster pump would be a, if you are familiar with what a wellhead looks like, if any of your friends have private wells on their property.
Yes.
Sticking out of the ground, you would see maybe a couple of, a couple of those sticking out of the ground with an electrical and and control cabinet adjacent to those. The location of that, yeah.
Nothing major.
Nothing major, and actually, the location of it would be off of Deerfoot, there's actually a twelve inch main that runs through the woods off of Deerfoot. And we would site it there in the middle of the woods where nobody would actually see it.
Okay, and you occupy the same role for Southboro and Ashland, exactly, you're their water consultant also?
I'm not Ashland's water consultant. We, we did that project for Ashland again because we, because we work for Southboro. And because we have insight into the Southboro system, we did that project for them, but we're not their, we're not Ashland's full-time consultant, no.
So they have their own water consultant?
Correct.
Okay, okay, um, last question is, you stated, I just wanna make sure I heard this, that Hopington is willing to go ahead and spend money on engineering, design, et cetera, in parallel with our consideration of this?
Correct, they have the money allocated just to go forward with design and like I said, we would like to move forward in parallel, but we're gonna move forward carefully. So as not to put ourselves out there too far without a commitment and without, you know, further discussion with the town.
Well, I don't see a whole lot of reason not to at least go to the next step on this one, other than, you know, what the twenty-three feet on Oak Hill might do to the site there.
Kathy, is that it for now?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. So I have a few questions. So if we were to decommission the, what would have been the fourth tank? What, what will happen, they'll just take, take it away and?
So the, so the fourth tank doesn't exist right now.
Okay, so the third tank.
The third tank, yeah, the third tank, yeah, they would demolish it.
Okay.
And take it away.
Okay. Will this have any impact on our water rates for Southboro?
This should have no impact on your water rates.
Okay. Will this require any of our employees that work for the water? Side of the house in terms of our resources?
No, so Southboro will continue to run Southboro system and the infrastructure in Southboro system. And Hopington will continue to run everything on their side of the, of the town line.
So what if there's a water main break on the source that goes to Hopington, but it's in Southboro?
So the. The pipe connection, the physical pipe connection that we have to put in there that that will go from Southboro to Hopington, it's actually very little pipe in Southboro. The, the piping right now in town comes almost right to the spot where we need it to be.
Okay.
So your, your obligation would be to that pipe would be just a few feet, it wouldn't be very much at all. And Hopington would be everything after that.
But we could technically have a break in Southboro that would impact Hopington.
Uh, potentially, yes.
Are you, do you know what other boards and committees would need to weigh in on this, like the height of the proposed tank? Anything that needs to happen in terms of conservation, any land related conservation?
So.
Height restrictions.
Yeah, I mean, what we have found is that. Utility infrastructure is is sometimes exempt from zoning height restrictions, but we would obviously run this by the zoning official before we proposed anything. In terms of conservation, again, we're gonna be putting on, our plan is to put it on exactly the site where the tank is right now, almost in exactly the same footprint, so we wouldn't be impacting any, any natural resources.
Can I figure that out, Josh? Sure, what about off Deerfoot, where you're looking to put the station that you just talked about? Is that in a, potentially, you might need to go to Conservation Commission for that area?
We would certainly look at that, we don't believe so right now, right? There's an existing water main that runs through there right now and we plan on, on putting it essentially right on top of that existing water main.
And in terms of capital, I know it's eight million dollars, but we don't necessarily know when we were gonna spend that. Can we figure out from like our long-term capital plan, anything that was on the docket in the next ten years? Just so we, we know out of the eight million, what? What we were going to spend in the near future or maybe you know?
Sure, well, what I can tell you is the, the pump stations, the, and the water main work, none of that is in your ten-year plan right now. Because again, those are not high priorities for the town of Southboro. The pump station that we have put, this one on, that serves the Skylar, Fairview Drive neighborhoods, that one is in your plan, that's probably in the next five years.
Okay.
We're looking to do that. And then the tank project, this tank project has been. You know, we've been working on this for quite a while on that. Even engineers before I was involved with the town, I've been working for the town of Southboro for fifteen years, even engineers before me, we're looking at this tank project, so it's hard to put exact timeline on that, but. That's becoming more critical as system demand goes up and as development happens.
In your mind, what's the risk for Southboro to do this?
It's, we're really designing this to be very, very low risk for Southboro. I mean, that's really our intent here is to, is to make this a, not just a good project for Hopington, but a good project for, for Southboro.
So go around again, okay. So I, I think mine's relatively quick, so in cost of looking ahead to, actually two questions. So on our pump stations, obviously, in order to pump out an additional two point seven million gallons, there's some upgrades that need to take place. So thirty years from now, say we've done this now, it's all completed today, thirty years from now, when those, the equipment needs to be updated again. That falls on Southboro specifically for the management and maintenance?
That's a great question, that's something that, that would be addressed in a future intermunicipal agreement about who pays for what. It can be, I'm not saying you have to do it any particular way, but you could, you could incorporate it in the rates that you charge Hopington for the water that they're purchasing from you, because they're gonna purchase this water. So it could be incorporated in the rates now and then Southboro could pay the full, the full freight on that, those upgrades in the future. Or it could be that you, I would say, reduce the rates, but you don't charge them as much right now with the cost sharing agreement in the future for upgrades. You know, it's something that it certainly can be worked out.
Okay.
I will be worked out.
Two, two follow-up questions, so this is a follow-up question off of Ms. Cook's question about the. Cost sharing, so under the current calculations that, that Hopington would not be paying the full cost of the tank for Southboro?
The, so the way we have it budgeted right now, we have budgeted that some. The, so the way we have it budgeted right now, we have budgeted in that some cost sharing for just the tank part of the project.
So, so, but, so for the eight million dollars in the spreadsheet that values the investment at eight million dollars, was there a number used as, as a placeholder or something about what was the ratio of cost share?
So what we had, what we had budgeted in there was that uh Hopington would take on all of the water main expenses, all of the pump station expenses. And that, and this is just a placeholder, I'm not suggesting that this is, I'm not negotiating on behalf of anybody, but we have in there as a placeholder right now fifty-fifty cost sharing on the tank project.
Okay, I mean, I, you know, I think it was something is, uh, it's not really a complete, right, short-term need that the town has, but there's uh attractive features of this, but. Um, and then also, so one thing I did to kind of, and this brought me with the executive summary of the April twenty twenty-two Water Master Plan, and. One thing which is good is that um of the recommended capital improvements that are. Things we need to do long-term, one, we're already doing independently of this, right, the, the Maiden Street?
Correct.
Okay, and then it looks like this does check off, I think, e- everything on there, right? Upgrade system storage in the low-end service, low-service area, high-service area, this would just, there would be one service area.
One service area.
Even though there's, we don't actually need a ton of extra capacity right now.
You need, so right now, your storage deficit and, I apologize, I have the number exactly off my head, you, your town requires right now about another two to three hundred thousand gallons of storage. Right, it, right now, independent of anything Hopington is doing, the town of Southboro could use another two to three hundred thousand gallons of storage, and I might be off by that number, I got to check my, my report. Um, this project raising the tank would eliminate that deficit. You guys would have all the storage that you need.
Are there any other significant long-term capital improvements that are not in the master plan? That you think are also significant that we should be considering?
Well, there's a, there's a connection that we, between presidential and, I believe it's.
Fisher?
Fisher, thank you, um, that we think is very critical, that we think the town of Southboro really should pursue.
Okay, that's in there, are there any others?
Oh, you mean outside of that report? As it pertains to the Hopkins.
Also, the presidential Fisher is not part of this.
Is not part of this.
Okay. Okay.
Sam, any else?
Couple more things, thanks. Um, storage actually is an interesting one that people don't think about from a, uh, emergency preparedness standpoint. Um, if you think about some sort of disaster where the water supply is cut off, um, having, you know, a million gallons of water in town that we can circulate locally. Is pretty valuable asset, in fact, in terms of public safety, that I think a lot of people don't think of that. Second, um, MWR actually has a sizable chunk of money for interest-free loans for water system upgrades. And Southboro actually has three million bucks that we haven't touched for that, that uh, if that comes up, it would be interesting, possible in terms of financing. And um, what is the cost budgeted for the tank itself? We said that was separated fifty-fifty.
Yeah, right now, we're budgeting somewhere between three and five million for that elevated tank.
Itself.
For the tank itself now.
And the other final point is that it seems to me that this is obviously a project that would generate a fair amount of public interest in various parts of town. I would think this would be a wonderful opportunity for the Public Works Planning Board to be the vetting process here and to, uh, in fact. I would look to them for recommendations about this and look to them to hold public hearings on this to gather public input and public support. A placeholder thought for the future.
Thank you. Kathy, do you want to add anything else?
Do, and I wasn't talking about the video. It says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it, so. Um, anyway, it was me. Um, so a follow-up question to what Mr. Teal said a minute ago, I just want to make sure that um. We heard this correctly, and it's, it's related to what Sam said about the MWR having twenty-five million extra gallons they'd like to offload. Why wouldn't this affect our water rates if Hopington were to start buying, you know, two point seven million gallons? So that the cost would, would do, or the, the fixed costs would be spread over a broader denominator. So we'd pay less money for our water, which then would impact our water rate, so it seems to me that it would impact our water rates.
It would slightly, I can answer that. Uh, MWR actually has done some modeling on that. If they sell an extra five million gallons a day. That trickles down to something like thirty thousand dollars a year or less for Southboro, spread across the MWR assessment, so it's not.
Do it again, Sam, how much do they have to sell?
Five million a day impacts Southboro by like thirty, forty thousand dollars a year in terms of our assessment.
All right, so not, not that much.
Of it goes to Boston, as a matter of fact, they use a huge proportion of the water, so, but it helps certainly, it does, it does lower our rates a little bit, but not so much that I'd notice.
And I also agree that this would be a really good project for the um Public Works Planning Board to pick up, and so I would want someone to um agree to. Call Ms. Gallagher and ask her to ask the PWPB to meet and um start looking at this.
Great, thank you, and I'm going to go to Mr. Faff. Andrew, I was going to bring you over, but I don't see you anymore.
Hey, everybody, it's uh Andrew Faff, fifty Oak Hill. Um, uh, obviously, this is, you know, I live on Oak Hill, this is directly in my, I'm going to butter to this project. I think what, two concerns, few concerns I have is, is, is one, that the, the twenty-three feet on this tower would be a significant increase in height. One of the benefits of this tower is that it is pretty well surrounded by trees, so would the trees need to be touched at all to replace the tower? I think that's my biggest concern. Um, and then two, um, I, uh, did the town ever go forward with putting the water tower on Fairview? Um, I thought that was the priority for the water system, at least it was a few years ago.
So the, uh, to answer your second question, no, the town did not move forward with the water tank on Fairview. And actually, this project would actually eliminate the need for that, that tank on Fairview. Then with, with regard to the trees, I mean, I'd have to look to see how close those trees are physically to the existing tank, but our intent is not to take down any of the surrounding trees to make this, this project go. Unless there, you know, unless those trees right now are encroaching on the existing tank, um, I don't, I don't see a need to take down any trees.
Okay, um, I mean, I think the biggest concern is obviously a bigger tank that's going to be more visible. I mean, this water tank, more than anyone in town, is directly in a residential neighborhood. There's a very small postage stamp of land that it sits on, basically in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Um, while it's pretty well hidden with the trees, it could become an eyesore very easily, um, and affect property value, so I think we just need to be cognizant of that, work with the. The neighbors and the abutters to come up with a plan that works for everybody. Uh, the other piece is. At the top of Oak Hill, including my house and my neighbors, our water pressure is terrible. Um, I think I have six PSI, so I have to put a pressure pump in. Um, you know, twenty-five hundred dollar ground force pump to, to run my house, and I think it's just, uh, you know, if we can work with the DPD, DPW to. You know, for better than fitting and making this better for the rest of the town, uh, it's in our backyard and we're not really getting any benefit for it. Um, I think I'd like to work with the town just to make sure it works for the neighbors here.
So, re-mentioned my other point, so this, this will add ten PSI to all the, all of the customers and all the residents that live uh near the Oak Hill tank. So this will, will add ten pounds of pressure to everybody. So it'll be, it'll be an improvement in pressure.
It's not. Um, I mean, the problem at the exact same level. So the issue is the drop in tank, and that, and that is not, on elevation range, I would think.
Oh, do you mean when the water level in the tank drops, your pressure drops significantly? Am I understanding that?
Yep, I've never had good water pressure. I had to put in the irrigation well just to water my lungs.
Gotcha.
So is that something you think this would address or?
Well, this will do, so the tank being taller, like I said, that will add ten PSI to everybody, right? Including anybody who lives near the tank. We will also be able to run, because we're going to push all that water into the top of the tank. We're going to be able to run at a narrower band, meaning that the water level in that tank on a regular basis will not have to fluctuate as much. Right now, that, that water level might drop twenty-five feet on a normal day, because it's so skinny, there's, there's not a lot of water in that tank at the top of the tank, so when the. When demand picks up in the morning, the water level in that Oak Hill tank drops very, very quickly, right? And you might lose twenty-five feet of that water before the pumps turn on and refill it. Because this thing is going to be much, much wider at the top than it is at the bottom, we're going to be able to run that at a much narrower band. So we're not going to see a twenty-five foot drop in water level in that tank in the morning, we're going to see maybe a five foot drop in water level.
Is this small?
But I thought you said that once, if Hopington is at their peak, that that ten increase might be offset by a ten decrease from them, so that the net would be zero.
The, the customers that might see the, the ten PSI um decrease are customers that are down by the connection. Um, by the, the uh, the Hopington connection, and those customers are getting very high pressure right now, they're getting um sixty, seventy, eighty PSI right now. So they're getting well above the minimum requirement for, for those folks, they're getting very good pressure right now.
I would say, just to be clear, Mr. Faff, who's right there by the Oak Hill tank, should see his go from six to sixteen?
He will see, yes, he will see a ten pound increase. I'm, I'm concerned about the six, and maybe we can talk offline about that six PSI, but. Um, he will see a ten pound increase in his pressure at a minimum, and he'll see better, more stable pressure. Uh, on a day-to-day basis, because we're not going to need to let the water level in that tank drop as much as it does right now. So it'll be higher pressure and it'll be more stable.
Okay, so there's the tank, basically, it wouldn't need to cut down trees because you would just put, uh, just like columns, that would be the base of it, and then. Would it, would it be like an orb, if for lack of a better term, that's wider than the current?
There's, um, there's different, there's different styles, but, um, so see, a spherical tank, it's like, people refer to it as a, as a golf ball on top of a T. That's one style of tank. We could look at that. There's also other tanks where you have a little bit wider base. Um, and then the top part is not quite as, as spherical, but it is round. Imagine the tank that you have right now with a wider cylinder sitting on top of it.
Okay.
That's what the, the base of the tank that we're going to put there is going to be about, about as wide as the tank that you have right now.
Golf ball on a T.
Maybe a golf ball, maybe like a, like a short can, you know, like just a round cylinder, yeah.
Good, sorry, just one more question, so how do you anticipate, I, I'm assuming there must be some level of access there now? To, you know, is that access big enough and wide enough to be able to get in the parks for the tank and all the work that you're going to need to do?
This is a very good question. We will, as we move through the design, we will have to look at um the construction access that is going to be required. Different style tanks require different types of construction access. The, the golf ball on a T is built much differently than. Um, one of the, the other style elevated storage tanks, they require totally different construction methods, different construction access. So that's something that we would look at as we're evaluating exactly the kind of tank we want to put on that site.
And I would hope that as, as we go through this process and, that you would also consider, as Andrew said, there's a nice buffer there with the neighbors now, so. I would hope that, you know, less if no trees come down to be able to, to get this done.
Right.
Because one tree makes a big difference from your sheltering at something that big.
Like I said, we will, we'll, as, we're going to take all this into consideration when we start designing whatever this tank is going to be. It is not our intent right now to take down any trees out there. The tank that's out there right now, my recollection is not being approached on by, by trees. Um, the new tank shouldn't either, but if we have a, a nuisance tree, let's say that's hanging over the fence or something like that. We may have to remove that just because it's a nuisance tree and it shouldn't be hanging over the fence, but our intent right now is not to take down any trees.
And one last process question. So as you move, say that we move forward within this process. Um, will the, the, obviously, this board would have to see the designs and, you know, take into a consent, uh, account, obviously. Abutters and whatnot, so that is part of the process as far as design goes, that this board would have the opportunity to review and have a say, so to speak.
Yep, so the design is going to move forward in stages, and, you know, we're going to be looking to, to get public input as we move through these stages. The permitting process moves in stages and there's going to be public input as part of that, so there'll be plenty of opportunity for folks to, to review and comment on the design.
That's what I promise.
Um, we have one hand in, uh, the firm online.
Uh, Chelsea, can I just have, ask one more question?
Sorry, Andrew, sure, go ahead. Yeah?
So five years ago, Public Works Planning Board said Fairview Hill was the best place for a water tank. Can you just explain why that changed from, you know, a hundred and thirty-page report till now?
So five years ago, before the, the, the idea of connecting to Hopington was ever contemplated. Uh, the plan for the town was to have two, to continue to operate as two separate pressure zones, the high service and the low service. And the idea was we were going to have two tanks in the low service area and two tanks in the high service area. Um, the location of the tanks um were selected based on elevation, based on a whole bunch of criteria that we looked at uh for tank siding. Uh, but the idea was ultimately to have two in both, so that we could take one tank out of service uh while we did maintenance on it, and we would have a backup tank in that service area. And so the, the Fairview tank was going to be the, the second tank in the high service area. Frankly, it was, it had not been contemplated until this point that we should raise the elevation of the Oak Hill tank uh by twenty-three feet and combine this all into one service area. And so it was as part of this project where we started to look at how best to deliver water down to the, the southern point in town. Um, how can we, how can we affect that? How can we do that most efficiently? That we started to contemplate the idea of raising the pressure in the low service area to move that water more efficiently. And to raise that pressure means to raise the tank at Oak Hill. So it wasn't until this project that this, this elimination of the two pressure zones was ever even contemplated.
Okay, and one more thing is, I see Chief Achilles there. Um, I, I would contemplate maybe also adding a radio antenna to the tower if at all possible. Thanks.
Um. Um, I'll, um, he, this person has this.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, it's Michael Weisong, one eighty-nine Cordova Road. Um, I really would urge the board to think about this very carefully. There are all sorts of issues here, you know, everyone's very rah rah about the MWR and selling more water. What does this mean for us, the residents of Southboro? It's all fine and good, uh, you know, that the fine folk in Hopington get more water. But why exactly, when your own consultants have told you that this is a terribly low priority project for Southboro? That almost every single element in this project is not a priority at all? Why would we go through the process of planning, working, developing, spending our time to develop this project that has almost zero benefit ultimately? To the town of Southboro and comes with huge concomitant problems? You're talking about opening up Parkerville Road. How many trees come down? What is the disruption? Who pays for the costs? We don't have a road budget now to pay for our current road repairs. Who pays for all these costs? Who pays for the police details or the inconvenience to the residents? You're talking a multi-month, if not a multi-year project to get something like this accomplished. This is not a small thing. Not only that, we are empowering our friends to the south to continue their process of rampant development. Which they chose to develop, knowing they did not have the water. Now, that's fine and good for Hopington, but for people who live on roads like Oak Hill Road or Cordova Road or Woodland Road. Who have to put up with the consequences of this huge development and the increase in traffic and all the other problems that go along with this. This is not a good thing. So in essence, this is like throwing alcohol, gasoline on a fire. To encourage more development with our neighbor and then have no plan for mitigating the effects on us. So I understand that this is going to go in front of the uh DPW Review Committee, which of course still has not met in sixteen months, and I hope that that will be fixed fairly soon. But I personally, as a taxpayer, would not be confident to place another project of this size and scope. Under the management of the current DPW as it exists. We have a DPW that is currently under investigation by the Mass Department of Transportation for potentially.
I'm sorry. We're going out, we're going outside of the bounds of, do you have anything you need to add to um this particular? We're going outside of the bounds of, do you have anything you need to add to, um, this particular?
No, I'm sorry, Chelsea. I'm sorry. But I do believe that the state Supreme Court has decided that we do have a right to, you know, is going to be reviewing cases of, of trying not to muzzle people when they're talking. So I would just like to end by saying, I hope that you will consider this and I hope that you will have a huge amount of resident input going forward. And by the way, I will add that that current tower on Oak Hill Road is a registered historical resource of the town of Southborough. It has its own MACRIS listing. It's listed on our historic surveys report. So I hope you will have the consideration to consult with the historical commission about any future changes to that site. Thank you.
So let me just jump in here before we lose a train here. Um, you know, I, I wish Public Works Planning Board would, um, reactivate and look at this, but we know it's going to go in front of capital. Uh, these are big capital expenses we're talking about. So capital is certainly going to vet this completely, Michael. Um, from beginning to end. And so there will be much more opportunity for people to weigh in, um, as this was started tonight.
I think we have a few, um, members in the room who would like to speak. So if you don't mind coming up to the table and.
Mimi Latrell, 19 Oregon Row, but I'm a member of the planning board, but speaking as a, a private citizen. And as always, I agree with Mr. Stivers. I think this should be vetted through the Public Works Planning Board. They, in 2017, the, um, report that was done for, to increase the capacity was vetted through, um, Public Works Planning Board at the request of the select board asked them to review it. So perhaps that could happen again. Um, I would also suggest that although PAR is our water consultants that are currently working for Hopkin, I would suggest that we have a peer review so that the interests of Southborough are reviewed and not just an interest of.
Thank you.
My name is John Reed, 34 Bigelow Road. For just three, uh, three topics or points that I wanted to just highlight. And the first one that's been reiterated now several times is really just thanking the select board, uh, in advance for making those arrangements to provide an opportunity for the public to, uh, listen to the presentation, uh, in more detail and that being facilitated by the DPW planning board. So thank you for, uh, for arranging for that. The second point is, and this just, this is speaking, uh, partially from my own, uh, professional experiences. Uh, as much as I, I appreciate the presentation made, uh, this evening, um, as I listened to the, the, uh, say the technical and commercial aspects of the project, it, uh, seemed to be, uh, focused on one approach. And I would just encourage, uh, those, uh, professionals who are involved in the presentation to, which is very typical of, uh, citing boards and other public hearings to, uh, provide various alternatives that the, uh, the residents of Southborough can, uh, can digest and understand and ask questions. And ultimately, uh, perhaps say have a say in that matter as to why, uh, a certain alternative was chosen, uh, over, over others. And that can, without getting into say the fine details of that, it's appreciating that. And, and this is just off the cuff and having no familiarity with this project is just understanding why it can't, for instance, be a direct connection from the MWRA, uh, water line and then, uh, and, and that it simply be in a matter of, Hopkin building its own, uh, facilities or looking at joint facilities. And I think we, we heard some benefits, uh, uh, from that, uh, in, in, uh, that type of say joint or shared facility, uh, arrangement. Uh, the, the third and final point is, uh, just with respect to, uh, there was one or two comments made about uh, growth. That's just a fact of the matter in terms of development. And if you read the news, or at least what I read on the, uh, local uh, Southborough news yesterday is mention of a, uh, some sort of a mixed use, uh, development on Route nine that could introduce, uh, additional housing. And, uh, and just maybe also sharing the personal experience of driving through, uh, Hopkin fairly recently. And I was uh, quite frank, quite frankly, I didn't actually know where I was in Hopkin, but I was surprised to see, um, a sizable development. And I happened to get behind a school bus and see, uh, half, half of a school bus, uh, full of children. Exit the bus and go up to that community. It was fascinating to see that, uh, with respect to development. Uh, I think everyone well appreciates there's a, there's, uh, housing is, is a shortage. And with that comes these opportunities where it will be, uh, more condensed housing. And I think it's a matter of time before Southborough is also, uh, if, if not, if you're not already dealing with that, will be, uh, we'll be managing that growth. So assured of that, uh, point is, um, in these, uh, alternatives to, uh, please consider, there was mention of the, uh, using that, that new tower as an example. It's not uncommon for, uh, projects to be, uh, to be uh, both developed and financed on the projection of a 30 year, say a 30 year useful life. If we want to be assured that those assets are, are adequate for 30 years to, uh, take that into consideration for both Southborough and Hopkin. And that's intended to avoid the situation that, uh, we don't, uh, we, we don't progress 15 years down the road and find out that, uh, there's all sorts of shortcomings and finger pointing. And, uh, it doesn't put anybody, it doesn't do anybody, uh, any good. Uh, so with those three points made, I appreciate the presentation. Thank everybody for their time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just got a lot of complaints about people not being there. So I just want to make sure.
But never not about being.
I just wanted to sort of raise the, the issue. Water is not my, my expertise. Um, but in general, I find that, you know, when you make things bigger and you make them more complicated, they tend to cost more. And so there's going to be some operational and maintenance cost increase that isn't, you know, proportional to how much water we deal with. But the fact that you've got a, you know, a pump that's three times as big or a control system that's, you know, seven times more complicated. I think it's important to think about as we go forward, what will it cost us to operate our part of that? What's going to cost to maintain our part of that as compared to the baseline case of where we are today? So I think, you know, there's a lot of detail like that, that it's important to look into and present so that it doesn't come up as a submarine, you know, surprise.
Do you want to add anything based on any of the comments that you heard?
This last gentleman's comment about the, of the ONM cost is absolutely right. I mean, future ONM costs are going to change based on, on how we operate these stations. They're bigger. Um, like I mentioned, eliminating a tank and a potential fourth tank is going to have changes to your operating cost. So that is definitely something that should be evaluated between the two communities when they're negotiating the intermunicipal agreement. And look at the financing because it definitely needs to be looked at.
Great. Anybody else in the room? Any comments or questions? Anybody online? Feel free to raise your hand if you have anything to add. Okay. I'm not seeing anyone. Thank you very much for coming in this evening and, um, we'll go back in steps, um, and talk to, uh, public works, public works planning board. Next on the agenda, um, is a request for Parkerville Road speed limit reduction, um, to, um, reduce to 25 miles per hour. Um, and I'm going to bring over Mr. Mariana. Hopefully I'm saying her name right. Myron, thank you. And I think I brought you over. Um, if you want to unmute and, um, give us an overview of what you're requesting. You should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for the invite. I think this is going to be an easy one for you after that one. Last one. My name is Robert Myron. I think the, the board is sort of familiar with the issue. I know, uh, my neighbor Peter Lepin, who was also on this Zoom, uh, has raised the issue, uh, a number of months prior. Just my background, um, the idea of going from 30 to 25, uh, sorely needed at Parkerville. I was on the Utradier Building Committee back in 95 to 97 with the express, um, partner, um, working neighborhood issues, safety issue. And we worked to put in the speed tables. We worked to put in the sidewalks. And we petitioned the state at the time to go from 35 to 25. Uh, we also petitioned to go have a three-way stop at Neary. And of course we had, we got nowhere with that. And, um, I worked very closely with Keys Associates, our designers, the design engineers. And Willie Colery, Chief of Police, who was a real help in this. He thought we absolutely needed to do something. We, people, I posted at 35, the state was going to leave Parkerville at 35. Uh, we had a problem. Of course with Neary, let alone now we're adding all the kids at Tradier. So, uh, it was Willie who came up with the idea that if we posted thickly settled, we could arbitrarily set, set it at 30 miles an hour, which is better than nothing. And then I didn't know this, that, that Peter Lepin had let me know, uh, that select now have the ability in a thickly settled zone to bring it down to 25, which is where Deerfoot is now, which is where middle is now. And also have the opportunity, um, to provide, you know, speed feedback signs if you need to. And I say this because through the pandemic, just over the years, there has been an explosion of people using the sidewalks and parkable road. Our kids are now walking home from school. Track team, track club, um, at St. Mark's comes down every afternoon, running four of rest across the sidewalk, some into the streets. And the speeds are up, even though every source did their upgrades. It gives us some additional traffic calming until we get, get a new pavement now. It's out of hand. And I'm talking school buses and usually empty commuter traffic. Um, people see 30 and they think 40, 45. If they see 25, they think more like 29 to 31, which is where we need to have it. And I think with the addition of, um, speed feedback signs, we could really reset the tone for Parkerville Road. We get the most traffic, but middle road Deerfoot even has speed feedback signs and they're posted at 25. If this is just a quick decision and a Phillips wrench to replace the signs, we need to do it for the kids and more than the kids. We need it to do for people who walk their dogs and everything. It's real hazard and, uh, we hope we, um, can get your consent to do that.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, and we, we did, um, some due diligence on this and there were some special acts passed in the town of Southborough in the 1970s. Um, that outline the speed limits on certain roads and Parkerville is included um, on one of those. And it was included in our packet for anyone to, anyone who's following along online. As well as all of these special acts for speed limits are available on the town website under DPW highway speed limits. Uh, for anybody who wants to reference them. Um, and so process wise, uh, what would need to happen if the board is, um, so willing to do so is we would have to petition with Maston to, um, reverse the special act that was passed in the 1970s to reduce the speed limit. And, um, I think that there's some questions that I have related to how the school zone worked with the special acts. And then a school zone with a flashing light trumps the special act that's on here, but that's only when the lights are flashing. So I think we have some inconsistencies with, uh, the rules, especially around our schools. Um, so I'll, I'll go kind of down the line here before I kind of, um, give my opinion of what I think potentially the steps forward could be, but just to get initial reactions, um, to what, um, what was just presented to us. So, um, Ms. Marshall, do you want to go first?
Sure. So, um, you actually brought up one of the concerns I had was the 20 mile an hour for the, for the schools. Um, I don't know, uh, and I look forward to you explaining to us the process. Obviously we're going on a special act and, and the timeframe that it would take and how it would affect. The document that we have in front of us for, uh, Parkerville northbound and Parkerville southbound. I would be very interested in hearing that. Um, obviously speeding is, is a major issue, uh, in this town, not just on Parkerville roads, but I understand the concern with kids and, um, anything that we could do to alleviate some of that. I mean, obviously schools are a, a big concern with kids walking to school and whatnot. So, um, I'd be interested to hear what some of the options are, Chelsea, but I don't have any specific questions about this time. Yeah, Drew?
Just generally I'm supportive of trying to lower the speed limit in a way that Mr., uh, Myron has suggested, I think it's, I, I have had some back and forth with Mark about Karen about this before. I think it's actually simpler. I think we don't, we wouldn't need to do traffic study. It's wouldn't need any legislative approval. It's not a, it's a special speed regulation that the DOT approved back, uh, long time ago, and that it may be as just as simple as we write a letter, say, please rescind this special speed regulation. And then you would, uh, then the statutory speed limits would kick into play and then we could do whatever we, we could drop the 25 under that. So, um, I think, you know, like this is an example of kind of the system working here. It's a, I mean, I think Sam deserves some credit for looking into that, um, having that local option. So if the resident has a concern like this, they can come to us and we can make some progress. But however is the right way, I kind of will defer to Karen and Mark on that, but I'm supportive of it. And it's just a matter of, I was impressed by how arcane and just few ideas about this. So I'm not going to, whatever is the way you do it, I'm supportive of it.
It's a stunning bureaucratic accomplishment here to propagate this. I think it's an easy decision. I think you got to do it. And I guess I would be more worried about the school zone speed limit if it were 60 miles an hour, if it were higher than we're talking about, since it's lower. But it seems to be not as much an issue to lower this to 25 here. So, uh, I would certainly be supportive of moving forward as quickly as we can to follow up with DOT or whoever to get permission to fall back on the statute in place.
So just to be clear, a school zone is 20 miles an hour and you're okay with doing 25?
25, yeah.
So when the light is not, if the light is out and not going in a school zone, then it defaults to 25. Okay.
I also am supportive of the 25 and then, um, 21 is some school hours. But Mr. Myron, I want to, um, emphasize something that you said. I live off of Pine Hill Road. And we've also had many, many, um, concerns over safety. So one thing that was down on Pine Hill Road, we did add the driver feedback signs and I am very confident that it has slowed people down much more than just a posted. So we're 30, but much more than posting 30. When that sign flashes at you, I, it just causes most people to take their foot off to accelerate. So I would encourage also the consideration of the driver feedback signs, if you can do it in a way that doesn't, um, interfere with the school zone signs.
I agree. I agree. And especially. I agree. I agree. And especially when you're coming off of Route 9, having like one there between Henry Knox and John Matthews, so they get the message right away. And then come up against a school zone and, and then maybe another one at the, at the bridge by the Fay Soccer Field as they're coming off of Route 30. I agree with you. It was very effective.
So I actually think that if we're going to look to do this on Parkerville North, that we look to do this by Parkerville, on Parkerville South, like Finn. Because I think if you're going to do it for one pool, and I would even include Deerfoot on that. And Mr. Marianna, I think you had said that Deerfoot was 25? I think Deerfoot, go ahead.
Yes, it is 25.
So on the special act from the 1970s, it does say 30 for like 0.53 miles. So I just need, I just want to look to see where those 30 ranges are and if they're actually at the entrances of Trotter or not. But I would, I would suggest that if we're going to petition Mast dot on this to change the special act, that we kind of do take a more global holistic view. I'm not sure how Route 85 could fit in with Woodward on that. Because it's a state road. But I think at least the roads that we can control, I'm most concerned about the, the school zones and making sure that, you know, I don't.
Why Deerfoot, Chelsea?
Because of Trotter. Yeah, Trotter.
Okay. All right. I'm with you.
And it would be wonderful. I don't know how the bureaucracy could possibly work here, but if we could do this by the time school starts in the fall, you can kind of open that up. That would be great.
I don't, so I don't know the timing of Mast dot, but I think if this board, it sounds like, it sounds like the board is supportive of pursuing this. And so I think we could act as quickly as, as physically possible. I just think we're at the mercy of Mast dot overturning the special act. And I also am unclear if there's a difference from Mast dot's perspective on speed in, within a school zone versus outside of the school zone. So if we're talking about Finn in particular, for example, the distance between the end of the school zone on the north side on Parkerville and then 0.06 miles south from Route 9, how they would view that stretch of road versus the school zone. So I think we need to think about how we would structure the petition to Mast dot to be, what, you know, what, what can, what should we focus on? If that makes sense.
It must be more inclusive rather than less.
Yeah, I just don't know how they view a stretch. So, and I'm sure Mast dot could explain this much better than I could. But if you read the supplement that was in our packet about how the flow of traffic, we look at the flow of traffic, traffic as well when they're doing speed, not what you want, but what, what it should be. So I just want to make sure that we're thoughtful in what we do.
I think it's a very good suggestion, Chelsea, that our request also have both sides of Parker Road, but just also before it goes a little bit farther, it's because the agenda item was just this one street. Consider this on other streets and it should do it as a separate reposting. But I think it's a good idea. I appreciate your very.
So there's a few hands. I have two Peters in the audience. So I'm just going to pick the first one that I see. If you don't mind stating your name and address, please.
Peter Lepin, 27, Parkerville Road.
Evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So in the proposal that I sent, I described where I'd like to see the driver feedback signs placed, specific locations, as Bob mentioned. So one is just north of Route 9, because people are driving 70 miles an hour on Route 9. And when they turn onto Parkerville, which is posted with yellow signs, 30 miles per hour. They, they tend to be going, you know, 50, right? And if the school signs happen to be flashing, they might slow down to 35 or 40. But if those signs aren't flashing, you know, they go as fast as they can. And Parkerville South already has driver feedback signs, and I'm pretty certain it's already posted at 25 miles per hour. The exception to these streets is Parkerville Road North. Deerfoot is posted 25 and has driver feedback signs. Middle Road is posted 25 and has driver feedback signs. This is on the north side of 9. And I know Parkerville on the south side of Route 9 also has driver feedback signage and is posted 25. So Parkerville Road North unfortunately only has diamond signs at either end, at Route 9 and at Main Street that say thickly settled with a small yellow sign beneath it showing 30 miles per hour. The only other speed limit signage is those flashing signs that only are activated at school opening and school closing times. So for the summer, they're, they're not on at all.
Right. And so I, I, I agree with that, Mr. Lepin. I did have an opportunity to talk to Acton Chief Newell earlier today. And part of the challenge that they have is if the light isn't flashing, then it defaults to what's in the special act from the 1970s, and they have less teeth to give out tickets. So I think it's beneficial for us to make sure that we petition Mast dot even on the, the south side of Parkerville to make sure that we can give our police officers the opportunity to write tickets if.
And what is the default for that special act? What's the default speed limit?
35. So.
Yeah, if it's not posted, it's 35.
Right. Okay, thank you. And are you also, do you have your hand up twice?
Yep, I'll lower that.
Just kidding. Want to make sure I don't miss someone. Thank you. I'm sorry. Are you all set?
Are we all set?
I'm sorry. I was talking to Mr. Lepin.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Ms. McCarthy?
Hi, this is Betsy McCarthy, 18, Parkerville Road. I, I think the strength of your argument would clearly be that that law that you are referring to or that document was written 45 years ago. The increase in, and I've been living here about 36 years, the increase in vehicular traffic is astronomical, as is the increase in building in the area. The entire road is only one mile from Route 9 to Route 30. And I would consider the entire road a school zone. So I just want to go on record supporting the lowering of the speed limit to 25. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the room want to weigh in on this one? No. Okay. Anybody else online, feel free to raise your hand. So I'm just trying to figure out next steps for this one because you're right, Andrew, I don't think that we can take a position on more than just Parkerville. So maybe.
We could ask Mark and Karen to, it seems that there's a consensus to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour about the issue that you raised. Maybe you can just come and present exactly what the options are. If we wanted to make it to keep the 20 in the flashing area, this is what we would do.
Yeah.
And if we didn't, this is what we'd do. And then we just, the next time it comes up with just like a clean vote to do A or B. Could they talk to Mast dot about with the process?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could have an informal discussion.
Okay.
Say, look, here's where the board is. Here's what we're looking to do. Here's what we did in 1979. Here's what you did for us in 1979.
Yeah.
How do we get to where we're looking to be with protecting the interest of the school zones and, and changing the speed limit from what it is now per the special speed regulation to what it would be under essentially Chapter 90, Section 17C?
Okay.
And what, once we get that determined, then layer in the driver feedback signs, once we know we can do this.
And talk about other roads as well. Other than Parker, potentially.
Okay. Mr. Marianna, I think that's all we need for tonight. But certainly, if you have any other questions, you can feel free to follow up with us, but those are the next steps.
Thank you very much for your consideration. I think it's a good plan moving forward. I, we all really appreciate your support.
Great. Thank you very much for coming. Have a great night.
Thank you. You too, you as well.
Thank you. Chair. Oh. I was not expecting that to be me. I was going to look at you. Member report. Anyone have anything for member report?
No.
No. Okay. The legislature report. Okay, that was easy. Okay. I am going to read off every consent agenda item and you tell me if you want me to hold it. A. I'm going to hold B. C?
Hold. Hold B.
Oh, sorry, Kathy. What's that?
Hold B.
I held B. Yep. What about C? We're going on C? Okay. D. E, I'm going to hold. F?
I'll hold just to do the explanation.
Okay. Okay. G?
Hold.
H, I'm holding. I? J?
Hold.
K?
Hold.
Okay. All right. So is there? Yeah.
Okay, I would only hold.
I was going to hold it evidence, so just hold it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So is there a motion to approve C, D, and I? Someone?
Second.
We have to roll call vote because we have one member not here. So Russia, Dunnington?
I.
Divers?
I.
Cook? Malinowski's eye. Okay. A. Who has that?
May 17th and May 31st.
Okay.
17?
Yeah.
Line 371, Mr. Mello's first name is Michelle. J O A O. That's it. And just for me, I think that these were distributed.
Last meeting and we didn't approve them.
I think you held them at the last meeting.
We did.
I'm not going to get in the way of this, so.
All right. May 31st.
I've got a few things. Right, line 39, I think it should be Mrs. Castle. Instead of Miss Castle, it should be Miss Wilson.
Yes.
In line 43, Mariki is misspelled, M A R I J K U. Line 214, to be Solf, property S O L F. And line 460 and 461. Mrs. Maria's quote was wrong there. I think what she said was that she would be interested in knowing about any plans or ideas that the St. Mark's Arbus has for this area. I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. Right.
So.
Okay.
And then line 490, not the Mr. Leroy, just Mr. Leroy.
I had a screen up. Okay. I had a few on this one. Row 164, it should be Mr. Parentin. Row 184, instead of based on need, it should be for all need based. I think that was it. Anybody else for May 31st?
Oh.
Go ahead.
On line 78 and 110. Okay, so this is in the bold part that's referring to the location of the trees. I would put after both of them, resident reported, just to be consistent with, because those were also pretty square, the request to do it.
Yeah.
On line 186, Ms. Gallagher stated time did not allow her to receive funding from the PWP. And she noted, instead of the board, I would say PWP, just to clarify that it's not a reference to the select board.
Yeah.
PWP on line 214, I don't know if someone already got this, Hurley is spelled wrong. I know that's just one of my neighbors. H U R L E Y. And 492. Sorry, someone also got this word and should be and, a N. No problems.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve open session meeting minutes for May 17, 2022 at 6:30 PM as amended? May 31st, 2022 as amended and June 2nd, 2022?
Second.
Roll call vote. Russia, I, Dannington?
I.
Divers?
I.
Cook?
I.
Oh, no, he's a, thank you. Okay, B. Kathy, do, do you want to go first on this one?
Yeah, is, is, is Tim Litt still in the audience?
Yes.
Okay. He took a look at these and had some issues and went back and forth with Ms. Gallagher on them. And I just want to make sure that we have satisfied his issues. They were, they were good questions. Mostly that dealt with the mattress and box springs, as far as what to do with those. I thought it was clear. He didn't. So I just want to make sure that we make it clear as far as what you can and can't do with that. And then we haven't talked about transfer station stickers, prices yet, right? It's, it's 250 in there. We haven't talked about changing those. We've got, you know, 8% inflation. Do we want to change those? Do we want to look at possibly charging seniors a little bit for, for stickers?
Okay, so Mr. Litt's at the table, so I'm going to let him speak to your first question.
Okay, well, I really didn't want to get into the middle of this because it's not my issue, right? I believe I've been rid of one mattress and one box spring since I've come to town. I don't have plans for it anymore.
But it's time for another one.
But I did read the proposed regulations and I did go back and forth with Ms. Gallagher on, on this. So the issue sort of comes down to DP is saying you can't put most mattresses and box springs, you know, into the landfills anymore. But you can put those that are contaminated with bugs or moles or whatever. So that's hard to explain. Then the, the next part of this is that DP was offering grants to Maple Towns to collect mattresses and, and box springs. And, you know, then contract with a recycler. This is something that Ms. Gallagher has chosen not to do. And so her current plan, according to the last email I got from her this afternoon, is to just tell the public, here are a couple of places that accept mattresses. So being a silly stupid person who really doesn't have, this is his issue, I went and looked at those places. Right? One of them charges $40 per mattress and, and box spring, and you have to bring it to them. And the other, it doesn't say that it will take things, you know, in small quantities from residents at all. And so sort of the question I had outstanding is, gee, if I were concerned about this personally, I'd be going, so my sticker used to pay for this, it doesn't anymore. Why doesn't the town sign a contract and have a drop off place or something? Because I wouldn't want to be strapping mattress and box spring or two or three of them on the top of my car and driving, driving them to Framingham or wherever the other one was. It doesn't seem to me like we had a plan. Yeah. And then the second part of this is, by the way, it isn't just mattresses and box springs, you can't put it anymore. It's textiles, which means clothing and all the rest of that.
That's a matter, right?
Textiles are no longer acceptable.
I'm sorry, you're, that's in the draft.
It's, it's in there as no longer acceptable at the transfer station. And there isn't a plan that I've seen for where to go because the mattress place doesn't take textiles. And the place that doesn't, the place that doesn't take individual drop bins does.
So, uh, there's also an option, all the schools, they have a textile bin that you can put in a trash bag and so I'll ask Karen to add that.
All I'm saying is, is, it doesn't seem to me like there's a a plan, and it seems like it's a big change from what currently exists for people who have to get rid of this stuff.
But there is clothing recycling at transfer stations.
Yes, right. But textile, like, the schools will actually take, like, textiles, not.
Tablecloths.
Yeah. Yeah.
And Goodwill doesn't want worn out clothing or dirty clothing. They want clothing that they can reprofuse.
There's an overall issue in the sense that, uh, we don't take TV sets, for example. Yeah, so I guess I don't feel there's an obligation to take absolutely everything that someone could throw away, and you gotta draw the line for places where we can do things economically. And I applaud Ms. Gallagher for finding other alternative sources to recommend to people. Maybe we just need to do a better job with locating some of those alternatives.
And Tim, just so you know too, there's actually a bill, H four eight five two, it came up today on the MMA meeting. There's actually an app to assess the future of mattress recycling in the Commonwealth. So if anyone's interested in following this, it is bill four eight five two. So.
I would like to drop this as a personal matter.
You know, but again, you can actually follow it as it goes through the process if anybody's so interested.
So, just to that point, not to belabor this topic, but when this came up at the last meeting, I think information you heard was that there had been prior efforts to recycle.
Yes.
Mattressism is disgusting because the mattresses would pile up and get mold.
And people would actually take them.
Yeah, so I, I think that for what rules and regulations are, what is here is, I would vote to include it, but I think that that's a good suggestion is to try that.
Yeah, I agree.
Provide more information about the places to.
On the website.
Yeah, right.
And Kathy, I actually held B for, or whatever letter we're on, B. We are, oh, we didn't make a very sure. On, um, it said for, to talk specifically about the sticker prices. So historically, the board has committed to using a hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund for, um, the operational cost of the, um, transfer station and then have the stickers pick up the rest. Um, and based on the projections of the number of stickers of FY twenty two and the costs of the expenses, then we're looking at spending a hundred and fifty thousand instead of a hundred thousand. So we are increasing, um, we're now up to fifty thousand dollars over. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, um, before we took.
Can I have a proposal?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sure.
I, I, yeah, being a senior, I will touch the third rail of sticker prices for seniors here. But, um, if we were, if we were to bump the two fifty to two sixty, if we were to charge ten dollars for each additional sticker, because they actually do cost us some money, and I think that's a reasonable, fair way to do that for additional stickers. If we charge twenty dollars per sticker for seniors, plus ten dollars for additional stickers for seniors as would regular people, that would get us about fifty K to be able to hit the target of a hundred thousand dollar subsidy, which I think is a good number. And you can play around with those kind of numbers as well, but it seems to me that, uh, it is not unreasonable to expect seniors to pay a little bit for this service, which is a very valuable service. And additional stickers, I think, are also worth charging some for because it does cost the towns some money to, to buy those, to administer them. So that seems to me to be a reasonably balanced way to do it. And clearly, there are plenty of other ways you could do that. But I would certainly support something like that to the subsidy about the same level.
So, I, I agree with part of that, Sam. I think that for a lot of people, this is a service. There's, you know, we have youth and family services, which help a demographic. You have the library. Not everybody goes to the library and you have the senior center. So I view this as a service. I'm, I'm not against, um, providing the additional fifty thousand only because of inflation and what everybody's going through right now. I hesitate to add. I would, could certainly be supportive of adding a little bit to the top of the sticker. Ten dollars, I think, is fairly reasonable for the second sticker. Most health schools have to. I'd be more apt to put ten dollars on a third, if somebody really wants a third bad enough. And I'm still, the seniors get nothing for their tax dollars. The majority of our budget goes to the schools. It's.
I think it's an overstatement to say.
Well.
Nothing, but.
Well.
We're only asking them to pay eight percent of the total, and I think they probably do get eight percent of, as far as benefit goes.
I, I agree, but it's always been, um, not that things can't change, but I think it's, it's a nice benefit to be able to give our seniors. Most of our seniors, not all, most of our seniors, um, you know, don't generate a whole lot of trash to begin with, you know, so.
I'm not so sure about that, actually. I, I sit up there on Saturdays and I see.
Wow.
A lot of people walk by their pretty big bags.
Well.
Anyway, it clearly it's a judgment call, subjective. And, uh, you know, I, what I was trying to do is balance the the need for, uh, uh, handling the subsidy issue there, spread it across the various users in a way that I think has much less impact overall with seniors than it does on non seniors in terms of cost.
You know, the, the inflation argument though is a, it's a tough one because if we don't raise costs because ours are going on, then we are absorbing, um, the inflation. So you raise costs because your costs have gone up, so our costs have gone up, so we raise, we raise this. So I would like to at least raise it by the ten. I like Sam's proposal all the way through. Um, but if we're not gonna raise, we're not gonna start charging seniors to twenty dollars. I'd like to raise it to fifty to two seventy. I wanna get close to that fifty thousand dollars if we can. You know what Kathy, I would be willing to go the extra ten on the end and not have the seniors pay it. I would be happy as a resident of the town to pay an extra ten dollars for my sticker so the seniors don't. It's still quite a bit cheaper than having your private hauler come pick up your trash. I'd be happy to do that, Kathy. Move it up to two seventy, and I would still say the third sticker is ten dollars, Sam. I think, um, do we have the statistics show us how many people get a third sticker?
Not the second or.
Not the second, but the third. A lot of people have a second. I mean, I, I have a second sticker, but I don't use, I think I've gone to the dump once, you know, so. But it's, if I needed to go, I could go.
That second sticker costs us real money to buy.
What do you, so Sam, sorry, can you back up? You're, you're suggesting how much for the first sticker?
Two sixty for the first sticker.
And how much for the second?
Ten for, ten for any, any additional stickers. I, I don't remember.
And then twenty for the first senior and ten for a second senior?
Ten for subsequent seniors to the stickers, that's right.
I'm actually interested just here first. I mean, just the background is Kathy, I brought this topic up when I went on my first meetings last year, and it just, there was no interest in this. So, I think now that I would go with a lower increase because one thing that I always had in mind, when this comes up, is how John Butler did that report to the advisory committee, spent a lot of time on it. And one of the takeaways was that you should keep the cost of this kind of low, that it's a fixed cost operation. You actually want more people.
Yeah.
You want more stuff.
Yeah.
And I think that basically the transfer station works in terms of volume and pricing pretty well. And there's definitely down, if you raise the price too much, you can have a real problem. So that's why I think two sixty sounds good. And then as to the rest of how much to start for the second stuff, I will go with whatever is the consensus.
Well, can I tell you where I got my two seventy? It wasn't arbitrary. It's eight percent, and that's what inflation is right now, so I didn't just make it up. Um, and yes, John Butler absolutely said we need to do more to get more people to use the transfer station, so we still should do that on top of this. Because, you know, it's a fixed cost, and the more we get, um, the, the, the less cost there is. So I still like the two seventy because it's eight percent and because we haven't raised it in quite a while.
Well, I, I would, and Kathy, what would you do for a second sticker then?
I'd say zero, so I'm trying to compromise here. Um, so I go for two seventy for one. I don't think many people get three, Lisa. I don't know what the number is, but I don't, I don't think that's gonna raise. I'm happy with the ten for the third.
There's fourteen hundred second stickers.
Yeah, there's, I know there's a lot of second. I just don't think there's a lot of third.
Second stickers, second to third.
Seconds and thirds and, I mean. I would rather go up ten dollars on the first sticker and charge ten dollars for a second sticker. Yeah.
I can be fine with that. Cause that's still the twenty dollars, and I think most people buy, so you're saying fourteen hundred do the second sticker, right? Yeah, so.
So, I mean, it's, it's gonna be another fifteen thousand dollars. It's not, I mean, it's not gonna, for just a second sticker. And then it'll be sixteen thousand dollars for your initial sticker.
So we're still short of.
So it's thirty.
I, I mean, we, we haven't gone up, since I've been on the board, we have not changed the structure. But I think it's prepped up more than fifty thousand in one year, right? So I think, I, I don't think it's fair for us to make up fifty thousand dollars in one year. That's kind of, I guess, where I'm.
So you go with the two sixty?
I go two sixty and ten dollars for a subsequent sticker. Right.
And who do you think like the seniors? This was what I had in my, last year is, the reason why I thought that, um, there should be potentially costs, just from my own work experience, I'm listening to senior partners at my firm brag about the discount that they got on, yeah, commuter rail passes, and I thought it just highlighted some of the inequities of it and how there's some people that could afford to pay, you know, and, uh, that's just my own. I, I think that there's a difference between taking two six, going from two fifty to two sixty and going from zero to ten psychologically impacting people's behavior, so that's why I think I'm just.
Well, there's actually, um, two seniors on the select board that, um, should be buying their sticker.
Absolutely. That's the point that I was.
I know it is, that's why it's so. But there's those that can't. Those are the ones I worry about, Kathy. I don't know how you draw the line, but to some, there are people in town that ten dollars could make a big difference for them. And I just, I'm always proud as a vet fact.
Is there not a waiver process here?
There is, but there's a lot of seniors that are pretty proud, Sam, that, that makes some very hard choices, that wouldn't come forward and ask for help. And, and that's one concern of mine. And I think it's a small price to pay. But again, I'm one. I'm one of five. The board can certainly do what it wants.
Me too.
That's a good thing, Sam.
We do have someone with their hand raised. Mr. Guy, I'm gonna allow you to speak, please.
Hello.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I just, I just ha- happened to, to, uh, come across this. I'm, this is a favorite topic of mine. Seniors and stickers. You know, I, I don't know if you saw my chat, but I have a free sticker on the front of my Lexus. Seems inappropriate. I'm, I'm in favor of giving those who need help a help. Maybe we should consider giving free stickers to those who really need help rather than, um, seniors who are doing well. Maybe you might wanna consider changing the policy. I know, I know this is political fire, but, uh, that seems to me the more appropriate, uh, way to go about things. So, uh, I just wanted to interject. I, that's, I said, I just stumbled into this. I was on YouTube and I saw you guys, so, uh, I just thought I'd give you that input. I've, I've said this before and I think it's true, so, thank you.
I would think the senior center could help us out here as far as making sure someone who, um, shouldn't pay, didn't pay.
So are we? We were on, on track here in terms of the non seniors.
Here, here's, I think we're on, on the same page with the non seniors, and I think maybe we can, get with the senior center on a, an appropriate plan to implement for next.
I think that's right, just because this, these rules affect. Okay, so we gotta make a decision then.
Yeah. Yeah.
It sounds like we got two votes for the senior. Not declared. I am gonna, I'm, I agree with what we said because there is psychologically, yeah, terms of how it affects people's behavior. You know, there's a difference between going from zero to ten, or even going from ten to twenty. Just keep it, I'm okay for now, keep it no fee and then.
And so we increased the subsidy by twenty grand or so.
Thirty.
Thirty grand.
Thirty. It'd be, cause it's sixteen, what did I say, sixteen, almost seventeen hundred for stickers of non seniors. Sixteen sixty eight.
And so. Ten dollars for subsequent.
Thirty one thousand.
Ten dollars for subsequent stickers.
Yep.
So I get like twenty five.
So are you using FY twenty two?
I can't remember what I used.
It's sixteen sixty eight and fourteen ninety eight.
So sixteen and fifteen is thirty one.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm okay with more subsidy.
Alright, so is there a motion to increase the first sticker, non senior to two hundred and sixty dollars and?
Chelsea, can you break up the motion into two? Do the, do the regular sticker first and then do the senior second?
I wasn't gonna make a motion on the senior. I was just gonna do first sticker and subsequent stickers.
Okay, alright. No, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so is there a motion to increase the first non senior sticker to two hundred and sixty dollars? And any subsequent sticker to ten dollars for FY twenty three?
So move.
Sorry, Sam, you said it first.
Uh, roll call vote. Russia.
Hi.
Dannington.
Hi.
Divers.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Oh, now he's eye.
If I could just add one final point, so we didn't take into account, Sam, the people that get the votes.
It's such a good sticker, it's Chelsea, so.
Right, but I'm just saying, when we talked about thirty one thousand, we didn't take into. Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Yeah, I missed it. I thought you said it didn't go to three. Okay. Ten times sixteen and ten times fourteen, right?
Yeah.
And that's only affecting the non seniors, so seniors that want additional stickers, those are.
Yeah. Okay, um, is there any other discussion on the rules and regs for FY twenty three? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the transfer station rules and regs for FY twenty three as amended with, uh, the sticker fee change? Okay, Russia. Dannington. Divers.
Hi.
Cook. Malinowski's eye. Okay, thank you. Right, we did see in the, okay, E. Um, I just held this, um, to, so that the public would be aware that as part of the communications, um, agreement for FY twenty three, there was an additional stipend added for a supervisor position to, uh, that department. It's not a new position, but it is a straight stipend to create some, um, management level on that, in that department. So I just wanted the, uh, the public to be aware of that. Uh, Mr. Murray.
Yep. Deputy Mayor, I have a question. Remember, we're just asking questions as a citizen. Can you give me a little bit of detail around that, these stipends that are given out or they're given to, you know, employees that are doing their job?
No, this is actually to create a management level for this department, so they'll have added responsibilities to, um, to their role, and they will actually, it, it can't be done until, it won't be posted until July first for something to apply for this stipend, and it will go through, uh, an interview and approval process in that.
Okay, and if they're a contractor, contractor, um, wouldn't they qualify for an increase in pay rate if they became a supervisor?
I'm sorry, if they're a contractor, they're maybe an employee.
So this is a SAP?
Union.
Uh, union.
Union, yes.
It's a union employee.
So it's a union employee, and I know that there's a couple of, of.
This is not a stipend as part of the SAP, it's a stipend within the contract. So it's different than the tree warding stipend that's in the SAP. This is actually a stipend, so that's why I'm bringing it up now because it was done through the negotiations. And so I just wanted to make sure the public was aware that this stipend is a newly added stipend to the contract.
So what, what does the, what does the person do in order to get this? So a person does their day job. It might be a, um, they might be a union worker. They have, you know, their certain level. and so they would apply to become a higher level under their contract?
So it's to, they would have a higher title to be a supervisor in dispatch.
Right.
And it would be, it would come with a stipend that would be spread over a 26 week, five week pay period.
Okay, but when they, when they get to that next level, they also get an increase in pay, so this is an additional increase in pay?
It's a stipend, so it's just a flat dollar amount for the year, it doesn't impact their staff or their, um, or their base pay.
Base salary.
Right here.
Yep, so do we do this a lot, I mean, so first...
There's a bunch, there's a bunch in the FIRE contract, um, for different, like, for EMS coordinator, and I, I don't have them all memorized, but, but just giving you a flavor for it, for the scheduling person, they do a stipend, um, so they're for added responsibilities, um, I'm not sure that, I can't think of any employees right now, um, but I know that there's a bunch in FIRE, um, and this, this has been something that's kind of been discussed on the dispatch side to create some management level for that.
Okay, and so this is dispatch, meaning TPW?
No, 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 communications, dispatch. Call 911, hi, hello, I'm 911. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Learned something, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, so is there a motion to approve the successor CBAs for police TPW communications?
So move.
Second. Roll call, Brashia, hi, Dennington.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Melanowski's aye, thank you. Uh, Andrew?
Yeah, I just held this because it was a late addition to the revised agenda, I'm not familiar with what it was, so, um, it, um, there's a predecessor side letter from, um, May 20, 2020, it has the exact same language, and that the prior side letter was spire, um, at the, uh, coming up in a couple weeks, so, I mean, the main, this is just continuing a policy that's been in place before, and it's included in the FY '23 budget, I wanted to hold it just to make sure that there's, didn't increase any new policy or anything like that, doesn't. And, I mean, the main takeaway is it's kind of just a little bit of a, should have been included in the bargaining agreement, but it wasn't, but it kind of was part and parcel. So, um, with that said, I would support it.
Okay, great. Uh, is there a motion to reauthorize the side letter with TPW union for operation supervisor position?
So move.
Second. Roll call, Brashia, hi, Dennington.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Melanowski's aye, thank you. Um, okay, G.
I L G.
Yeah.
I'm fine with the transfer, but the purpose for the transfer in terms of the cybersecurity study, I think it should be contingent on the municipal technology committee participating in that process and effectively, I would say approving, but being a partner in that process, I think there's deep experience in this area on the MTC, and I think we are well served by having them actively involved in it, so I would hope that, uh, Dave Montiel would work closely with them on this and take their advice in this process, so with that, sort of, overlay here, I think it's a good expenditure or something, we're clearly in the, uh, as far as continuing to protect the security of, of way ransomware to the best of our means.
Well, I want to go further, I want to, I want this contingent on the approval of MTC, not just asking, I want it to be required.
I'd support that too.
I think that's kind of stepping on the toes of the IT manager, but...
I don't, I don't.
I don't either. I think huge expertise there, and that we couldn't afford to pay consulting rates for our committees, and I think we're wise to take advantage of that. Not that Jay isn't a strong manager, but that's not the, where Jay spent his last, you know, 20 years in terms of cybersecurity.
But Jay is responsible for the system.
Correct.
He is, and we want to take advantage of the expertise on the MTC so that he can use that, he's one person. They've got a whole lot of expertise they can bring to the table, and we, I, I really want him to work with those guys, and this is one thing I really am insistent on as far as, um, the process goes, because they've got a deep understanding of this specific area.
And I don't disagree, and I know that Mr. Montiel works collaboratively with them, but the way the committee is set up, they advise Mr. Montiel, it's his decision on how to move forward, so I just want to make sure that we're respecting the roles of, of everyone in the process that we've set up. But I, I get your point, and that's why he does work collaboratively, nobody knows anything, you know, or knows everything in IT, so, you know, you've got to lean on each other, um...
Totally agree with that, we want to help Jay, so we want Jay to have the support he needs to make decisions so that he really does have the device of others, so he can make a complete decision, so we're trying to help him, not hurt him.
Oh, I agree, I'm just trying to identify whose decision it is, that's all.
Yeah. I'm along the same lines, Kathy, I don't, I don't have an issue with MTC chiming in, but I think ultimately Jay is a department head, and ultimately, he has to make the decision that, um, and again, I can't imagine he wouldn't have a discussion with MTC and let him know what path he's going on, but I, I hesitate to clip the wings of a department head who brought him in for a specific reason, and he can certainly utilize the expertise of MTC, but ultimately, if, if MTC is gonna sign off on everything he does, then he's not really a department head, he has no authority to make decisions that we hired him to do, that's my...
We didn't say he's signing off on everything, we said specific area, this is what we're talking about here, is something that the MTC specifically has a deep understanding and experience in. So with this one, um, project, I want MTC to basically have a chance to weigh in, review, um, and recommend and approve what he, so Jay can go to them and say, this is what I'd like to do, I want them to, to sign off on this, so we know that we really have thought through this.
Well, too, the minister, what, what is his name, but I don't know if Kathy can see, Jay is here, uh, you know, if you want to comment on...
Um, yeah, so, I, I agree that I need to work with the MTC, and I am in coordination with the MTC in talking about this, um, it is important to know that we have to gather information, not just from residents of the town, but from another entity. And not only is that entity important to hear the information from, but they're certified, they're, and I'm not saying that anybody in the MTC is not, they are definitely certified, but there is insurance and, you know, backgrounds that we, we signed insurance policies for cybersecurity risks. Is the MTC gonna present, you know, present an insurance policy saying that their information that they're gathering from me is 100%, and I have to go off of what they say? I want their information from the MTC as well. But I also need to have this information from a third party source, someone who's gonna give me their point of view. And yes, 100%, I am going to present this to the MTC. I have plans to, you know, they've kind of scheduled times with me, literally in the last few weeks, that are either A, someone has gotten sick, or B, I've been working with, you know, setting up process for the select board or meetings that are going on with servers that I'm working on, so it's been bad timing on our parts to kind of collaborate together with also the chair and one of the members of the MTC, but, you know, you got to understand that this information that we're gathering, it's, you know, as much as MTC is weighing in and they have their say as far as what they know, I need a third party's opinion on this, so it's, I'm trying, I'm not trying to take away the MTC's piece on this, but I also would like to have the authority to say, hey, we need this third party to come in and give us their assessment, and then have it as a, you know, MTC to weigh in as well.
Certainly not suggesting that we don't use a third party, I think that's why it's a good thing to do, and, you know, I hire consultants to do this kind of stuff all the time. I guess my concern is simply that we hope that you and the MTC are on the same page with how this goes forward, and if it turns out you're not, then rather than, you know, try to put together a structure that anticipates all the possibilities there, come back and talk about it, let's talk about it, see what the differences are, and sort of that, I don't think it's likely to be a big problem. I just want to be sure that that expertise is, is well used, and I expect that it would be, I think historically, you work well with the group, I think, so hopefully that will continue.
Yeah.
So is it fair to say consult with and use them as a sounding board for the process that you're going through? I mean, I think, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, but if there is a difference of opinion on that going forward, then let's all talk about it.
I, I don't agree with that part, I think.
I don't either.
So I think that, um, Mr. Montiel should have as department, and I agree with his position on this. I simply want to allow the, you know, encourage the collaboration, I understand, I think you've given me the assurances, um, that are appropriate, and so I don't envision a second meeting, I don't even know what one would really contribute to this. I mean, I don't, the amount of money that's involved and the technical aspects of it, this is something that definitely should be within your purview, but you, you know, encourage you to get some advice from some other people to, in way, give whatever weight you think is appropriate.
I mean, I do think there's value in Jay bringing this to an MTC meeting and saying, this is what the plan is, this is who I'm going with, backcheck me, you know, that, I think that's what I would be looking for in, in this, is, is them kind of being a second set of eyes for Jay in this process, that's, I guess, what my, my, my mindset is.
I don't, um, I don't, I agree with part of it, but not the part, this is what I'm doing, um, here it is. I want Jay to put together a proposal and then present it to MTC at a meeting, let them have a chance to look at it and comment on it, and then make a decision as to what to do, my guess is, um, they may be fine with it, that's great, but they may have some constructive suggestions that would improve it too. I want to know that MTC has truly weighed in on this and agree with what we're doing before it's actually purchased.
I mean, I, I, I'm not sure how else to, you know, that, pretty much that's my, my point on this, I, I don't anticipate...
That's great, if that's your plan, then that's, that's fine, but...
I don't anticipate not collaborating with the MTC at all, that was not my plan at all, my plan is to collaborate with them and understand what their points of views are on this. But, you know, I think it is important for us to get another observation of what our, our town's, you know, stances and, and I think we're, we're agreeing with that as a matter of...
Totally agree with that, totally agree.
See how this works, and then deal with anything else that comes after it.
So, um, I'm a little discouraged by, by this conversation, and, um, for anyone who doesn't know, I wrote and negotiated the bylaw that created the MTC, and we had extensive conversations about the role of the MTC and the role of, of the technology managers in the town. Um, the MTC, as Mr. Purple has said, is an advisory body. The technology managers, according to the bylaw, are required to bring plans before the MTC for review. The MTC is obliged to review them, to comment them, to apply its expertise. It does not approve anything. It should not approve anything. Um, it should certainly have an opinion, and I certainly support the notion of strongly encouraging all the technology managers to listen to the MTC, because, uh, as Ms. Cook has said, there is enormous expertise in the people who've been selected, in particular, some expertise in this area. But, at the end of the day, it's the technology managers who are responsible, they're the ones who'll get the call in the middle of the night, so, um, I want to make sure that there is a productive relationship, I want to make sure that the MTC is consulted as required, that it's carefully listened to, if there's a disagreement, I would encourage Jay to escalate it or to find a third party to try and sort things out, because my experience has been that that group of people, uh, is thoughtful. But I do not support the notion of tying the hands of the IT manager or any other technology manager in the town, or putting the MTC in the position of approving or disapproving. You can have an opinion, your opinion ought to be listened to, but, I mean, that's where I am on this, and I should also say that as I negotiated this with, um, schools, the then IT manager, with Mr. Purple, with, with others, I gave my word that that's the way I would encourage things to run. So, while I appreciate the, the support that's implicit in Mr. Stivers and Ms. Cook's comments in terms of saying that the MTC is a valuable resource and that it'll be listened to, there is a bright line between who's responsible for executing a plan and who's responsible for reviewing it, and I strongly discourage you from blurring that line.
I'm okay with going forward with this one, I think the, the message is clear here, and let's see how it works, and, uh, if it doesn't, then, you know, I would propose revisiting, but I'm hopeful that this will work its way to appropriateness, we'll get a great result.
And just to be clear as far as what the message is, we want Jay to consult with MTC before this is actually purchased. Correct?
Yes, yeah.
My turn, sure, yeah.
Um, okay, so just moving forward, were there any other, this was prompted by G, are there any other future department to transfer? Not for me.
I would do have a, here, in the virtual room, though. Please, Rungy, this is on cybersecurity conversation.
Hi, I'm Jane Rungy, I'm at 43 East Main Street, and actually, my question is not about what you're currently talking about. I track, um, it could be wrong, but there seemed to be a very quick vote on a matter involving the DPW and employment.
It's not there yet.
No.
We haven't voted.
We're in consent still, ma'am.
But there was something that was very quickly voted on.
On the DPW union stipend, or the side letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was related to a union contract.
Okay, so it's not the final decision?
Uh, it was an unrelated item.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
No problem. Um, the other discussion on approval to term mental transfers is proposed by the finance director. Is there a motion?
So move, approve.
Second. Roll call, Brashia, hi, Dennington.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Melanowski's aye, thank you. Okay, next is the board committee and appointment, so, um, Melanie, um, has been trying to contact everybody that was up for, um, reappointment for FY '23, um, and I just wanted to quickly read out the names of the people who are choosing not to reappoint, um, on their committees, just to thank them for their service to the town. Um, obviously, any time that they are serving for the town is taking away from their personal lives, and we certainly appreciate their input, um, that they have given for the years of service, um, that they've done, so, Kathleen Wiltord, Jeffrey Pete, Jason Deeks, Thomas Markoulier, Isabella Bergdanskis, Jenny Pete, Isabel Murphy, Daniel Blanchard, and Mary Donbacher, thank you for your time and effort on the committees that you've served on. And with that, there are, we have an updated color code in our packet, and so I would suggest that we reappoint the, um, the color blue.
Nice question, so, Mr. Robinson's here tonight.
Yeah.
Said that he wants to be reappointed, are you gonna do those separately as well as sponsorship, mentioned two members were looking to reappoint.
So what I'm gonna, so, yes, so I am going to do all the blues, other than capital planning, because I'm gonna abstain from that one, we'll do capital planning separately, and then we'll do the two scholarships and the, um, EDC. Okay.
I, uh, I'm gonna vote for, um, reappointing people who are in the color.
The blue?
Blue, it's more green on mine.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, blue rain, yeah.
But I just wanted to, the thing I flagged was, um, under the South Row Trails Committee, it still shows, it shows two people as associate members, right?
Well, because it hasn't gone, um...
So this, so this is, so this is, this is a decision.
Yeah.
I thought that the, the town meeting said no.
But it hasn't gone to, it hasn't gone to the H, the...
The Attorney General, sorry.
Okay, so the Attorney General hasn't approved the, the committee, the standing committee yet? So technically, we could keep the alternate, our alternates on, but it's a decision that we could make tonight.
Correct, so do you want to, I'm not sure what happened, do, do you, do you want to... Do you, do you, do you want to continue it until we get the form back from the Attorney General's office? Or do you simply not want them to continue it to the fiscal year?
I mean, the Attorney General's office is gonna approve it.
Correct.
Yes.
And town meetings are pretty clear.
So.
It has been submitted to the Attorney General's office, so probably sometime, I would say in the next. Few days.
So I I I would, to avoid having something like this come back up again, I would just, we. Uh, again, I, some of us support it, some of it didn't, but. The decision was made, so I don't wish to point any associate members after six thirty twenty-two.
Okay. Okay. So I'm gonna move that we reappoint those in the bluish green color. Other than capital planning.
So moved.
Russia, hi, Dennington.
Hi.
Stivers.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Alanowski's eye, okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve, um, the the capital planning members in the bluish? Green.
So move. Second.
Uh, Russia.
Hi.
Dennington.
Hi.
Stivers.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Alanowski abstain. Okay, and then is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Robbins from EDC? Um, Ms. Mills from Scholarship and Ms. Segal from Scholarship.
So move. Second.
Russia, hi, Dennington.
Hi.
Stivers.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Alanowski's eye, okay, and then we'll take up the ones that we haven't heard from at the July. Thank you. All right, so, um, Jay and Kay. Um, well, actually, Jay, does anybody have changes to Jay? I think we can say that, Jay.
I do.
This is just to approve them.
You can hold June second.
Uh, that's right, um, June second.
Okay, so we're gonna hold June second?
Because they already made changes on May thirty-first and those are reflected.
Two on table.
I will just table June second.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve executive session meeting minutes for May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two?
So move, second.
Russia, hi, Dennington.
Hi.
Stivers.
Hi.
Cook. Hi. Alanowski's eye, okay, I'm gonna hold on the release of executive session minutes after. Um, I didn't be another matter.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, um, other matters, so appoint Hassan Hamet to senior IT specialist position. Uh, Mark.
Thank you. Um, so as you know, we have had, um, a good deal of difficulty recruiting someone to this position. The last, um, time we talked about this, we asked the board to appoint someone who, um, withdrew his acceptance. Um, after your vote, so we went back out and interviewed another applicant who we would like to recommend for appointment tonight. Um, he is someone that, um, Jay knows from our prior employment experience and it's very highly of. He is someone that we have looked at, um, a development plan early on, a strategic program that that he could do in-house. As he is ramping up his, um, time on the job here, if he were to be appointed by the board tonight. Um, I would say he's someone that we've made a list between us that it's different things that he could take over immediately to sort of shift some things. Off of Jay's plate, which we are very hopeful about, to give him time to work on many other projects. You know, things like taking over, you know, the Zoom administration, um, all the help desk, the kind of ticketing items, you know. Sitting up the AV for meetings, um, you know, but there's more on that list, but those are things that we know that this person could absorb immediately. So we would like to recommend him for appointment tonight.
Right, thank you, good.
One question for you, Jet.
Yes.
Will this allow you to be able to take a vacation, a real vacation?
I think I might be able to breathe for a little bit.
That's my other question, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, um, you know, it was a good job to the townhouse staff thinking about outside the box and to Jay about. Thinking about an outside the box to the, um. Extremely challenging, um, hiring. Matter, I mean, it goes back to like two years.
If you remember, we just hired him. He came to town meeting and spoke to.
Yeah.
You know, what you might need and town meeting gave that money and since then, we have been working on this and. It has been a real trial.
I certainly support this, hopefully get this on boarded, if we can get this gentleman.
I would also add, we have, um, talked to the MTC, of course, about this, um, as well as the chair of the first.
Good. And it's, it's in the SAP because it was approved.
Yes, it is, yes.
Question, Jay, um, I'm assuming that this individual, uh, I've heard that he doesn't have technical background at this point, but you're confident that he can quickly take over things like Zoom and.
Yeah, I mean, even with the, with the lack of some intense background, um, his ability to, you know, with technology in its sense. He's always got the general sense of technology and also has been.
Back then he was a video game expert or something.
Exactly, so. And that's all you need at this point, no, no, I mean, seriously, he he's definitely, he he definitely has the ability to take over. There's definitely the portion of items that we've talked about in our listing here, um, that we're definitely confident that he will take over with.
Good. Great hire, not exactly what we wanted, but it takes the pressure off.
Yeah.
Frankly, I'm not hugely optimistic for what we're paying. We're gonna get what we originally originally wanted in this market as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm doing some hiring in this area and it's a tough place out there in terms of the salary expectations as well as lifestyle level expectations.
But we actually did get some people within the range.
Yeah.
But, you know, they ended up using us as a tool for improving.
Leverage it here.
Their current, current position with their employers and, you know, you know, all the best to them, but that didn't help us at all. So I think that really where we are now is is getting someone who's, you know, got base technology, you know, with really good customer service skills. That we can bring in, we can train up the right way, um, they can provide something to Jeremy, look, yeah. Is my first choice telling, you know, telling Jay that, okay, you know, now we're gonna give you a mentoring project. Yeah, you know, we want somebody to help you, but you've gotta have, there's gonna be a level of investment for him. So, you know, we're gonna continue to work closely with him on this and, you know, again, he's got a lot of support.
And his expectations are consistent that it's, you know, evenings and crazy schedule.
Yes, yes, very much so.
His schedule needs to be crazier than his schedule.
Yeah. Wouldn't be nice. Yeah. Looking forward.
So this, this clearly is a gamble, um, Jay, we are relying on the fact that you know this person and know his work ethic, et cetera, and that he's a quick learner. But, um, it's my understanding that you spent a real significant amount of time on Zoom, so I can't wait for this person to get here to take that off of you. So you can get to the things that, um, we want to get you to, like getting us to the cloud, et cetera. Um, but I don't want anybody to think that this is it. Um, I still think we look for the second person that can stand beside Jay and, uh, work with him and really develop policies. So that we really know that we are dealing with the concerns when you deal with, so I'm hoping we end up with three people sometime in the near future. Um, to to do what we need to be done, but I'm all for this.
Okay, great, so, um, is there a motion to appoint Hassan Hamet to senior IT specialist position?
Effective.
Effective July fifth.
July first.
Fifth.
July fifth.
That's right, correct.
Second.
Second.
Uh, okay, well, I'll vote Russia.
Hi.
Dennington.
Hi.
Stivers.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Alanowski's eye, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you, Jack.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, um, approved successor agreement for DPW superintendent, Karen Galligan. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Dennington, um, as soon as this negotiation.
Sure, so, um, the upbeat of the new successor contract is in the packet. This is the point of information, I think it was in the packet that was distributed on Friday.
Yes.
It was not in the supplemental packet that was distributed on Monday, it was in the packet that was distributed Friday. And, uh, first, I just want to review three points. One, uh, the compensation, which is the material element of the contract. The performance evaluation and then third, you know, leave and other fringe benefits. So first, uh, in terms of compensation, this is, there's an expiring contract that had a three-year term that went from July first, two thousand and nineteen. Through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, that's what prompted this to come up. Under the prior expiring contract, Miss Galigan started a salary of a hundred and twelve thousand, uh, thirty-seven dollars on July first, two thousand and nineteen. There was a contractual, uh, contractual increase of two point five percent. And it's two and three, so that her current salary in FY twenty-two is a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. Under the new contract, beginning FY twenty-three, Miss Galigan's salary for FY twenty-three would be a hundred and twenty thousand. Sixty-three dollars representing a two percent increase and as a reference point, SAP is a three percent increase. In in years two and three, there is no guaranteed contractual increase, but rather. Miss Galligan is eligible for an annual increase up to the then current SAP based on a performance evaluation. And then second, under the performance evaluation, under the expiring contract, there was nothing. In the employment agreement that referenced a performance evaluation, although there were performance evaluations with written performance evaluations. This is now in the contract that on annual basis, there'll be a performance evaluation. It will be done by Mr. Purple in collaboration with the select board. The select board has an opportunity to provide feedback that's referenced in the. Annual performance evaluation, the intent is to develop a very clear set of measurable goals in FY. Twenty-three and work to support Miss Galligan in achieving those goals. And then third, in terms of fringe benefits. Like leave and, uh, defined contribution plan, uh. There's no change, although the, um. Some of the languages are just updated based on a review of, we worked with town council to standardize some of the language, just like we would be doing with other department heads. So, um. That about summarizes it. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the, um, new contract for. Beginning on July first, two thousand and twenty-two and going through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Any questions? Um. Is there a second, second, okay, um, sure, do you want it from the table?
And if you're in ten winter street. Um, so the annual performance review that is now going to be mandatory, would that be publicly available?
Um, so that's. We don't make performance evaluations publicly available except for Mr. Purple's has been in the past, is that accurate?
Do you mind evaluating publicly?
Yes. Um.
So why would you not do?
Um. I would need to find out why we haven't done that in the past, I don't have the answer for you right now.
Well, we, we don't make any performance reviews public.
Mark, we, we do, because we do it in open session, because it's. It's us doing it, so his we, we do publicly, like.
Well, you haven't done it in the past with her because she hasn't been provided with annual salary.
She has, she has, she has been reviewed every year since I've been on the board.
With written?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Which is that. Because the performance evaluation. Then that's the basis for a select board vote as to whether, what would be the salary for the next year.
Correct.
That, and that would be on an agenda item on this, on the. This same time in two thousand and twenty-three, that would be in a time where that would come up.
Correct, which has not been done in the past, so that's new with this contract.
Right, so the evaluations that are done by this board are public, but evaluations that are not done by this board are confidential. I'm just gonna ask that question.
And is the evaluation for her going to be done by this board?
We have input into it and Mr. Purple does the actual evaluation.
So it's like you're telling me it's gonna be private.
But we, but as Mr. Dennington just referred to, we would have, um, we would vote on what her increase would be as we did with the first year of this contract. As a board.
So let's be clear here, um, Ms. Roy's asking a legitimate question here, if there's some that are public. Um, why is the DPW head not public?
So.
Because the board, so the select board does not do the review.
What would have to be done in order to ensure that it would be public? I mean, is that a policy change, is that, um, I mean, I don't think it's a legal issue, so. If it's just simply a policy change, I'd like to request that policy change be made. Is it a policy change, Mark?
It's always been, it's the way it's always been, so I don't know that necessarily it's a policy change, I could check the labor council and find out if it's.
Yeah, sure, I think that's something we can follow up on.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd also comment that, in fact, uh, years ago, the personnel board used to do public reviews of all the staff.
Right.
Which was often a somewhat awkward process as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
Well, so then they changed that policy, so in fact, typically, uh. Department head reviews of staff are not public. Uh, in in this case, I think it's consistent that Mr. Purple is doing the review, at least it's consistent with that, that that would not be a public.
Well, but I think that.
But I understand the desire to get that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the reason that Mr. Purple is doing that review, it's, I mean, he's in. Really the department head, she's the department head.
He's the town administrator, so all, all the departments actually work to.
Fulfilling role as personnel manager. I I'm just, I guess what I'm putting forward is I would like to request that, um, as a taxpayer and the employer of this individual. I would like to have access to her salary, uh, annual reviews, performance review.
I think that's something we can follow up on.
Okay.
So that motion to. There's such an order as the employer.
Um, well, her salary is paid by the town taxes.
Correct.
So I pay taxes.
Correct.
I voted these people or not to represent me, whether effectively they do that or not. Um, I I'm not sure because, um. One would hope that if you vote somebody and they're going to represent you as you would choose to make those decisions yourself. Um, given the fact that we are just. Signing off on this contract. Um, with the amount of dissension over this person and her position over the last couple of years. And what I really consider very serious mistakes that were made with absolutely no repercussions. I do question whether they're making the best decision for me as a taxpayer. So my next question is. Why is there not any repercussion or discussion or further involvement? Regarding the numerous issues that I brought out in the letter that were put forth by dozens of people from this town. I mean, you know, the list went on, I edited it. This has been an ongoing issue of considerable mismanagement. Ir- irresponsible use of taxpayer money. And you're here to vote to approve a contract that gives you more benefits and a higher salary.
So I personally read what you submitted this afternoon and I am confident that we have listened to what people have said. And will, are working towards putting measures in place to be more supportive of the DPW department. And I think we've already started that with some of the things that have happened in the spring. And we are always open to resident feedback on things that you would like to see happen and and the vetting process. So I, I appreciate your input and the fact that you put that together and I think that it's only gonna help us improve in that, in that area. And I think, sitting here as a board member, um, I do believe that this is the best decision for the town at this point. And I hope that, um, we can continue to collaborate to move the town forward.
And and just to this point.
Go ahead.
As the chair. As the chair and as a point of order, I made a motion and the leader was seconded.
Correct.
So it's not a time to vote, that's my thing, okay? So let's call the vote. I think there's been a motion that's been made and it's been seconded.
Yes.
So let's.
So so you didn't ask for public comment before.
No, that's not correct, there was a public comment section at at the end and I think there's been a motion made and it's been seconded, so the next step is to take a vote.
Do you take that, what do you take, Lauren?
Yes.
Approve the contract?
I was like, excuse me, I'm a resident town here, I've been living here for twenty six years, I pay my taxes. This is like Joanne Pierce in one on one Wintham Street, this is like the fox in the hen house. With what happened at St. Mark's, as far as I know, you all were involved in making that decision along with Karen Gallagher. People are outraged over what happened and yet you're the ones that are going to approve or give her a new contract. So of course you don't wanna say she hasn't done a good job because that reflects back on all of the jobs that you've been doing. People are very upset with what's going on, I live on Wintham Street, we're putting in a new water pipe line here. And when I called the DPW yesterday, because I know there's no money now to pay the street. We who live on the street have been dealing with the dug up street at the um medical center end. From when underground pipes were laid, I believe it was in Foggus. So now the whole street, as soon as you get the valve, the supply chain issues, the whole street will be dug up. And now it won't be repaid except for paving over the trench, but it will be a horrible street to drive on for what, until after twenty twenty three?
So I think I think that, um, I we would appreciate you reaching out to us on email because that's a little bit outside of the contract. That we're about to sign off on, but I think that this is an important issue that we need to um hear about, so. Um, I or I'm happy to call call you tomorrow and discuss um this issue because I think we need to address it.
Uh, we should, we should vote as Mister Dinning says, but I wanna add one thing to Ms. Fiore. On July seventh, we are gonna have our annual planning meeting and at the top of some of our list are a lot of issues that have been brought up. By you, by the the um um lady that just spoke as far as roads go. So we are going to work really hard to to solve the issues that we know need to be solved in this next year.
If we could get, if I could get your information, that would be great, so we can follow up and put that in our discussion for the seventh.
And why when the public, ever since she's been head, I don't know anybody who, people that I know. Who like what she does, who like the way she's been doing her job and yet you seem to be doing this blanket, oh yes, we're just gonna renew our contract, we're gonna raise. You represent us. And the townspeople, most of the people in town do not like the job she's been doing and yet you're just sort of saying, oh, good, we'll reward you with a raise. Even though you are not real like what you're doing, we people don't trust what you're doing.
Thank you. Uh, so motions been made and seconded, roll call, Brashia, Dettington, Stivers.
Aye.
Um, Cook.
Aye.
Alanowski. Okay, so that was from. Okay, um, next is item C, consideration of, I'm sorry, so I'm gonna go back, thank you, I'm gonna go back up to consent agenda. Okay, um, to release executive session minutes, um. It some have redactions um that are unrelated to the topic that we just, um. Voted on, um, but we will be releasing three minutes related to that. And team, so I'm, okay, so is there a motion to release executive session meeting minutes for January eighteenth, twenty twenty two, February fifteenth, twenty twenty two. March twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, April fifth, twenty twenty two, April twelve, twenty twenty two, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, and May thirty first, twenty twenty two.
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call vote, Brashia, Dettington, Stivers.
Aye.
Uh, Cook.
Spain.
And Alanowski is on, okay, so that was four, zero, one. So item C under other matters, consideration of allocation of twenty twelve thousand dollars in the arborist funds from taxation relief committee. I'm gonna table this one until our July meeting, um, there was new information that was provided to me today and I, um. I think it's best for us to not take the position on this tonight.
Can I ask just some point of information, so, because I've been confused about this, for twelve thousand dollars, would that basically be like? Principal that has been invested in some way?
No, that wasn't the intent.
Grants.
Okay, because the request was like funded at this level, but this is just a pasture, right?
Yes, well, right, which there's some questions around that, so I wanna make sure we have the right, yeah, information.
So it's not that we don't support it, we just wanna make sure that we do this correctly.
Correct. Okay, um, discussion of tree warden position for FY twenty three. So, um. Mister Purple and team have put together some information from other communities on what, um. Tree wardens have consisted consisted of and how arborists be get into that, um, so Mister Purple, do you wanna give a? General overview of that?
Sure, um, I've given a lot from the sale who helped you or was served to obtain a lot of information. It was very helpful to compile that, um. It it's, I guess, a little bit all over the map, uh, as to how people do it, again, most people have a tree warden. Um, you know, we heard from, you know, roughly, you know, a dozen communities, um. Few of them have a tree warden, who is in fact in arborist, there are some that do use, um, in arborist in addition. Um, I think one of the, um, you know, and and it's really all over the place, you know, some of the larger communities, they have large tree budgets. Um, one of them has a municipal light plant, so they also do all the tree trimming and everything around the wires, as we normally have, who's secret do here. Um, uh, some of them, um, uh, tend to, uh, lean on utility company to try to do as much of the work for them as they can. Um, and, you know, because they have limited budgets, um. It's it's like I said, it's really all over the place because some people who are on staff, um, you know, who have a, um, a full time position. You know, there was a couple, um, a couple of those, again, one of them had a municipal light plant and and that was really the reason for the full time employee, but, um, one of them did not. So it's 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 a little bit, it's a little bit all over the place, again, I think that, um. There's nothing, there's no definitive takeaway as to a right way or a wrong way to do this.
None of these had a like consultant outside on our rate, looks like.
No, i- i- it's it's different, you know, it's difficult, you you know, you see some of the information is blank, some of it, you know, it's it's difficult to get people to respond to these type of things. It's difficult for getting them filled out boxes, um, so, um. You know, we could, you know, we can, uh, continue to try to get additional information and more things about rates and, um, things of that nature. But this is where we are.
Thoughts on this?
Go ahead, Sam.
Um, one of the things that strikes me looking at this data, not at all clear to me, we actually need an arborist, given the cost and whatever. Um, it's, we got a lot of dead trees out there that we ought to deal with, I think, without a lot of analysis, et cetera. And it seems to me that that Mister Leroy is willing to, uh, stay on as as tree warden with his stipend. That I think should take care of a lot of the things that we need, as long as we've got the right to review, process, public notice, all those kind of things in place. And if we do have issues where somebody wants a tree removed, it's pretty clearly a live tree, uh, like when we had recently in terms of, uh. Uh, evaluation that the crown is dead and it's probably not gonna live too long, those kind of inputs I think are helpful and when we've gotten those in the past, I think those have been listened to. It's all generally, so it seems to me we can get the, uh, plenty of work, given our tree budget limitations. To, uh, take care of trees that need to be removed plus allow some for emergency work. Uh, with, uh, more or less the same staffing going forward, it'd be great to have a contract arborist available if we could arrange for that, uh. On a reasonable price basis, and I think there is difference depending on what that might be in terms of cost. So continue looking for somebody, you know, at the fifty dollar hour range or whatever, uh, seems to be that possible from what I heard. And then, um, uh, focus on the process that Ms. Brashia, Mister Trelle and others have been working on to. Make sure that we are doing the right thing in terms of public notice. At, uh, you know, being able to move forward with trees that ought to be removed, that, uh, in one way or another, at least an imminent hazard, likely danger for us, so. I'm I'm sure, I'm not sure we're too far away from actually having a solution that is workable for the at least near future here and if that doesn't work, we can think about plan B.
So, Sam, I completely agree with you and I think if the processes are in place, then you take out all the speculation. And I'm hoping in working with Mister Trelle that, you know, planning board and board of selectmen can jointly come up with a process that works. And I think it has been, um. It worked well having the arborist that we had come out for the tree hearings that we did. Um, I don't know if that's something we specifically would like to continue with doing, he lives here in town. Uh, he has done this his whole life, you know, and he has a tremendous value. Um, but I think the key, I agree, Sam, the key is the process, if the processes are in place and if we can hopefully get something done. Um, you know, Mimi was was ready to go and I went on vacation, so it kind of threw the monkey wrench in, but, um, you know, um. I'm sure, you know, hopefully maybe this week if Mimi has time, we can sit down and 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 I think, um, we need to talk about the. Uh, and endanger trees as well, I think there needs to be a fairly clear process, I think it's again fairly simple, but I think it's just, it makes sense.
Yeah, and and the recent example on Lottosworn, I think, was a clear case of imminent danger that ought to, I think, prevail. Uh, in those kind of circumstances and there ought to be some check and balance in there, I think, but, uh, at least I think we're reasonably close.
We're working towards something, Sam, I do.
Another interesting one is that, uh, knowing where the rights of way are in terms of what's a public tree and what's a private tree is an interesting question. And I actually did a meeting recently where a bunch of DPW directors were, chased to talk to a couple of them. And apparently there's no easy solution for that and the the model seems to be if somebody, uh, thinks it's a, uh, a private tree. Versus public tree, then the proposal is, okay, you've been paid for the survey to determine, we're gonna assume that it's a public shaped tree. If you can prove otherwise by survey that you pay for, then, uh, you know, we'll act accordingly. But the assumption is, the conservative approach is that it's, it's a question, it's a public shape tree, and we go from there, so. Again, I think there are models out there that we can look to to deal with some of the questions that are gray areas.
Yeah, Sam, I agree, and one of the things we talked about when Mimi and I had that with Karen is this new pavement management software. Actually will have some level of, um. It will allow us to hopefully integrate and when when capital reviews it, hopefully that's gonna be one of the main things we talked about because. Maybe you can verify, there's not a whole lot to go on now, it's the stone wall here, the, you know, it's it's tough when you get on some of these old roads.
Former cow path.
Yeah, it's it's tough, you know, I mean, specifically like Mimi had had a property survey, so she knew exactly where hers was, I have no idea. So it's tough and hopefully this will help Sam alleviate that.
Create a GIS layer to get this information in and as you get tree information, you can put it in there to build a record over time.
I think it's key in working together, you're you're right, it's key in working together to to collaborate, you know, something that we can all agree on, but this gives us an opportunity through the pavement management system.
Okay, so, uh, I mean, the one thing to take away from this was actually most communities have a, the town employee is the tree warden. Some arborists, some not, but, um. I mean, what you were seemed to be suggesting is you could have, you know. At least through fall town meeting.
Yeah.
Continue to have Mister Leroy be the tree warden and then from there, you know, um. I think Mimi had asked this question, I really have a great answer, how how does like the amount of what you pay the tree warden relate to the rest of this? Because really, the tree warden should be presiding over the hearings over any. You know, um, shade tree anyway, it's it's just like a sense of mind that if this.
So, so I'm sorry, I just wanna interrupt you one piece, so one of the things that in talking with town council about this. Is this gets a little bit convoluted because of the special act, it created the DPW.
Oh.
Okay, so the DPW eliminated. Tree warden, cemetery commissioners, um, water commissioners and everything and made the board of selectmen, now select board. Tree warden, sewer commissioners, water, right, water commissioners and cemeteries and so, um. What I have from council, Jay has said is that you can delegate and you can appoint, you know, someone as tree warden responsibilities. They can make the recommendations to you. But you're the tree warden, so you need to make the decision.
So ultimately, you're saying we get to meet with planning board in the joint and solid with Karen's?
So, so that that would mean.
All right. All right.
Well, I I think that's a lot of.
It is.
Okay, all right, so this will require revision of the special act to, is that what you're saying?
That requires a lot of work, yeah, if you wanna go and change the, you know, we got the town meeting petition in the legislature.
Well, isn't the new bylaw, till we have the new bylaw, that's what we're gonna do.
So I mean, the select board has, presides over like the the type of.
I don't know that the new bylaw would trump the special act.
I don't think so.
But I think it's easy enough to work something out with planning board that one meeting a month or one, once every two months, the very first thing, we do a joint meeting and we just take care of.
Work through the trees, the trees have gone very quickly typically.
I'm sorry.
But all the pre-work went into it, right?
So it's been pre-work.
And and the arborist waited and there was a representative from both. Boards at the.
Well, yeah, we did, right, so I think. But I think that, I think planning board wants to continue that piece, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, is. You know, when when the walkthroughs happen, there's advance, enough advanced notice that a planning board member certainly can attend the the walk. Which is exactly what we did.
Okay.
You know. Wanna come up, Mimi, sorry, I just wanna make sure people can hear you.
So a couple of things, we have, so we've had an arborist that has, um. Done evaluations on trees on separate roads in town and we have a list of dead trees. I would think that that would be the priority to take care of those, you don't need an arborist.
Right.
Like, you know, anyone can look and see.
Well, I agree, there's some on Oregon Road over there running around that are just totally, I mean, I would like to emphasize, let's just take care of those.
Need to change that.
Now you need a.
So depending on the road, I think for, you would need.
I mean, you still need a hearing.
Still need a hearing.
Yeah.
Yep.
But you don't need an arborist to say that's a dead tree.
Yeah.
I, with my, with my limited knowledge of trees, can tell you.
Looks pretty good.
If it has no leaves on it in the middle of the summer. So, so I would think that would be the first thing to take care of, which we don't really need an arborist for, and then there's that list of residents' calls, which.
Some are, some aren't.
Well, so so the last I heard, Chris was gonna update that with another column with what the status is and I haven't heard anything.
I'll follow up with him on that tomorrow, Mimi.
We gotta be able to make progress, it sounds like, with the backlog of trees that are dead, so.
Yes.
But we don't have a complete listing in town, though.
No, but we have several roads.
Several steps, there was two, I think, isn't it, there's two different reports that Maya made for.
I think there's three.
Is it three, okay.
But then, okay, but those that are on scenic roads, but then need to have a. A joint hearing.
Correct.
Those are difficult to schedule, right?
You could have, just, we should just schedule a meeting if there's that many, one meeting specifically for this.
Yeah, when we did, when we did hearings and they weren't just on dead trees, but we did in the last hearings, we really did, other than the ones just. A couple of weeks ago in October of twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Um, we did like forty trees or something.
So I think maybe. We need to look at the list and see how many there are first, I think it's gonna be more than a tree budget, seventy nine, there you go.
Yes.
Um, seventy nine, so we would need, we would need to see what the cost would be obviously, and if we can do this before fall town meeting, we can, obviously.
Or look to the tree warden, DVW, to make a suggestion about how do you make the money go as far as it could go in a reasonable way. And and simultaneously, it would be good to have, ask the tree warden to put together a plan for how do we do similar evaluation for other roads in town. Ultimately, it'd be great to have this for, you know, all the dead trees and public roads.
So I, Sam, I think they 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 got another grant and they're gonna be doing a whole another list of roads, I just don't know specifically what they are yet, Karen. I just don't know specifically what they are yet, Karen mentioned.
You can probably find dead trees faster than.
Yeah, I think so.
So does that mean the tree warden would be kind of administrative, but they would advise this?
What what I'm suggesting is, it sounds like for a while we could have to continue doing that?
For the, you mean, the scenic roads and the tree, we're just going to need the tree warden regardless. I I'm not qualified certainly to go out and look at trees. I mean, ultimately, according to what Mark just said, and Kathy, you probably had more conversations with Mark on this than than we, that ultimately, we are the tree warden and any any hearings, this board has to be a part of. That's how the special act is done.
So.
Right, so what we did last meeting was wrong. Um, that's why we stopped talking about the two trees on Deerfoot and and Flag, because we called it an appeal and it wasn't an appeal. We hadn't had the consolidated hearing. Um, planning board had it with Mr. Leroy and not with us, so we just stopped talking about those two trees.
Okay, I just, big picture.
Yep.
Well, I know it might take some bureaucracy work to revise a special act so that for a select, the select board is no longer the tree warden. But I just think that I'm happy to delegate that and that I thought the statute said the select board appoints the tree warden and then we collaborate with the planning board on the, you know, public meetings, like who would be the the tree warden? And the person be appropriately qualified and then and then we don't have to preside over for the next X number of years. Uh, right?
So according, so according to council, you can delegate the responsibility, not the decision.
I don't get that.
Uh, so you can, you can appoint Mr. Leroy to be the tree warden and to go and do the investigation and 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 get the resident complaints about the trees and check them out and do everything, do all the admitted, as as Mr. Trellus said, all the administrative pieces of it and everything and that. And then we come to you and again, it's a scenic road, it's a joint hearing, and he'll make his recommendation. And select board will even need to accept our.
So is that a whole public hearing then at where the tree?
It is, yes.
Yes.
And if it's not a scenic road, it's our decision.
We have to pay the newspaper and all that.
That's what's required by statute.
Either way, though.
Yeah.
But we deal with all the trees. Some of them are going to be joint with planning board and some won't, whether they're scenic roads or not, but we deal with them all.
Right. Most will be joint because every every road that became a public way before nineteen seventy-eight. And all may be scenic.
Except the numbered groups.
Yeah. We could certainly start a parallel process to do a special act. Takes time, but those are usually passed by the legislature.
Maybe this is like a July seventh.
Yeah, yeah.
Near term.
Much appreciated, as always.
Okay, um, so in terms of the extension of the appointment for the current tree warden, we currently have him through, uh, six thirty twenty-two. Um, so I would suggest that we extend, uh, that and, uh, continue to use an arborist as needed and, um, extend him for ninety days at least as we're getting closer to fall town meeting and figuring out what a, um, more permanent path is.
So I I would suggest doing it maybe six months. If we're going to really take a look at taking down these dead trees, then we're going to, I'm certainly not qualified to go out and look at them.
I'm fine with six months, let's just do it and then.
He's willing to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So, um, I make a motion, or sorry, so we make a motion to extend the appointment of Chris Leroy, um, as tree warden through twelve thirty-one twenty-two.
So, second.
Roll pop, Russia.
Hi.
Dannington.
Hi.
Stivers.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
No, no, excuse me. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, discussion of St. Mark's Street project. Um, Mark, do you want to give an update in terms of, um, timing on the project and?
Sure. Um, so my understanding is that, um, St. Mark's School is still in the process of filing the application with the state for archaeological study. Once that is done, it will be several weeks, probably close to a month before that's approved. Um, I think that the the bottom line for the work to be done and results to be known is probably going to be somewhere around Labor Day. And I think that the board had indicated, if not voted, to kind of put a pause on the project until after the results of of that work was done. Um, since, uh, also, um, I did, um, have a meeting, um, with DOT. DOT had asked, um, to meet with myself, Miss Gallego, and also with, um, uh, Greg, uh, from DHB, who designed the project and helped with the application for the grant. Um, and they just wanted to, uh, discuss the project, discuss where we were with, um, with it. And, um, also included was, um, the person, Cassandra Gaspont, who ordinates the shared streets program at state level. So we had met and we had had a conversation about where we were with the project and talked about, uh, some of the challenges, um, that we've had and the effect that, um, the project is currently paused, given, you know, the situation. Um, Mass DOT, um, I think it alluded to earlier this evening and that had been, um, contacted by Inspector General's office because they were looking into some, uh, as they, I think they put it in the social media, um, posts and everything and that about the project and they wanted to understand things a little bit more. So we had a conversation, um, with them, uh, again, uh, yeah, Anne Sullivan, Michael Era, um, and, um, and Barry Lorien, who's the head of District Three, um, was meeting, um, meeting with us on the project. Um, a couple of takeaways, um, that, and and I'm waiting, um, to get something back formally from Mr. Lorien, um, is that, um, in reviewing, um, the grant expenditures for the project, you know, MassDOT had determined and, um, um, Ms. Gaspont from the state incurred the funds appropriately, um, as, um, related to the grants as defined in the application. In terms of the road funds were expended in the chapter ninety, um, they felt those funds were expended appropriately, um, on the project. While the cross-country path of the history walk wasn't constructed, if you look at the original map that was put up about the history walk, um, it did include sidewalks and everything that either are currently constructed or are planned to be part of the, uh, the project, um, on St. Mark Street. And, um, and so that will, you know, the only piece of the history walk that isn't being, uh, done at this point is the cross-country piece, which is going over the library property where the store walk is now. There was a discussion about the applicability of the project, um, if the, uh, you know, would the project still have been, um, advantageous or eligible if the history walk wasn't included? And, um, Ms. Gaspont had said that it was. Um, uh, would it have been more attractive, you know, with a full history walk and everything? She thought that it might be, but it certainly did not affect, um, the eligibility for it. I think one of the takeaways for this is the shared streets program was intended by the state to be a quick hitting program. We want to give you the money, we want something done with it right away, we want to move quickly and see the results. And what Southborough tried to do with it was not wrong. It just made it more difficult because it was a smaller piece of a larger project. And I think it's more for, you know, in their opinion, it was a little bit of lessons learned, um, that, you know, we need to make sure moving forward that, you know, these are more standalone than they are, um, accent pieces to other projects. Um, one thing, um, so the, so two takeaways from that meeting. Um, DOT, uh, was was satisfied with the information provided in the conversation. They're essentially waiting to hear from us as to when the park is completed. Um, and and they, you know, come out and inspect and make sure everything's all set. Um, there's really not going to be any need to have another discussion with DOT unless there's no park. If there's no park, which is the central piece of the grant, then we'll need to have another conversation about, you know, whether or not, um, the grant funding is still applicable. So, um, and then the, um, the last piece, which again, I'm waiting for some clarification from Mass DOT on, is that until this grant piece is resolved, um, there's probably going to be a little bit of a hold on future grant applications coming from Southborough. So consideration is probably going to be, um, you know, not wholly given until this issue gets, you know, this grant gets satisfied. So.
Just quickly, you said, the extension was through six thirty twenty-three.
That's correct. What, six thirty, six thirty of twenty-three? So the grant funds under the shared streets have been expended.
Agreed. But for the park to be completed.
No, no, so, no, 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 six thirty twenty-three was the extension for North Borough Road to be our funds for the state.
Okay.
Okay.
So at this.
No, the the original grant was to be done by May thirty-first, then we got an extension and, uh, that two hundred ninety thousand dollars was spent. So we met the deadline as far as that grant goes.
Okay.
December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one for that.
Yes. Yes, that's fine, add my year off, thank you.
Again, I'm waiting for some confirmation from Mr. Lorien on those facts, but this is, those will be, those will be the takeaways from.
And are they going to put what they told you in writing?
So the hardest thing to get from the state is something in writing, um, and but it has been requested. Um, and so I hope, I hope that I've given them a head start to create what we're looking for in writing. But yes, I've tried to impress upon them, I think it would be very helpful to have, to have what what I've just talked about in writing.
Okay, well, um, just jumping the gun here, I'd rather you talk about this revised charge whenever you want, but I thought. And with you, um.
Okay, any other comments about Mr. Purple just?
Quick question, Mark. Um, given the timing that you mentioned, uh, if hypothetically we get a response on the archaeological process by Labor Day, is it then not possible, assuming hypothetically that, uh, we restart the construction projects at that point? Can we get anything significant done during this construction season or do they not have an entire event?
So I I think it depends where the contractor is with other projects. Um, it doesn't appear that they're going to be considering the Deerfoot Flag intersection. Um, and again, at at some point, I think that's something this board should take a position on, that if we're doing, we're not doing, so that we can work things out with the contractor if we have to amend an existing contract. But that's, that's a separate issue. Um, I I think the question is, how quickly can we get them back? And is there other work that they can be doing? Because again, they didn't want to bring a crew in to do work down here at the triangle. They want to bring them in to do it here and do it in another place or something. So I think it's how we can fit into their plans, we can still have those conversations.
Yeah, I I ask because I'm not too excited about having Mark there for another year.
Well, so one thing that you could do, first off, the road work, if any work was done by the end of this year, it would just be the road. So not to. Okay, yes. So the road, and that is, I know Mr. Miller, um, has made the point, you know, recommending that this wait until the archaeological study is done. So then, you know, that's, that's one thing. The one thing you could do is to just, you just grade it for now, so it doesn't have the big piles. And then, you know, there's then a, a more community-driven process for a plan for park. Um, and then that's something that hopefully will then be two thousand and twenty-three. And I mean, all of this is a little bit slower than and I thought in the summer of twenty twenty-one. But that's why I keep mentioning the tricentennial is I just continue to think that it's a valuable space and that by twenty twenty-seven, we're going to attempt it more than, but, you know, there'll be a, uh, a nice park. And, you know, in the history walk, everyone agrees, this, this is an opportunity to build the history walk. It's just how, where, when, et cetera.
Yeah, I think the challenge with this, sorry, is, is what Mr. Purple said is we can't get any grants until this is done. So I would think that we need to know what we're doing sooner rather than later to either come up with what we think should be done or go back to the state and say we, and I'm not saying, I think these are the two options, I'm not saying what we should do, but I think the two options are either know what you're doing, you finish it and you move on, or you give the money back to the state for what was spent.
But but hopefully, we're not sitting and waiting for, you know, Labor Day. So, and I know you want to get to your second part of it.
Hold on for a second. Remember this contract included three parts. The the biggest part is still finishing Main Street. Nothing's stopping that from going forward. It's supposed to be starting really soon, so the contractor can start there. There is a chance we're going to hear from St. Marx or at least the, what the archaeologist thinks before Labor Day as far as at least knowing how far north any issues are, which is what we're trying to find out and that's why we're holding off on the road work. But even if we don't hear until Labor Day, um, as soon as we hear, we should be ready to go. The contractors should, we should discuss with contractors so that their teeth are ready to go. So I don't see why this is going to delay getting future grants that much. Um, Andrew's working committee will continue its work on the park, which he's going to talk about in a second. So it it still should be able to happen fairly fast. Um, it's, it's, we're not a year away, we're, we're a few months away. It's delayed for a few months until we get to study and it's assuming this study, um, has resolved that lets us do this work.
Can I, let me just ask, so the grant was contingent, or what your general discussion was?
Yes.
On the park being completed, correct? So I think Kathy, you can't do the plantings until the spring. So my, that brings me to my second question. How may that affect the one-stop grant that we applied for?
That's what I really would like the clarification, excuse me, clarification from Mass DOT.
So was the hold on the grant is until the park is completed or at least there is a design? It's until the park is completed.
The one-stop grant's gone in, right?
Yes, but if, but if they're not going to, if they're going to hold back grants, that may be one cap. Again, that's why I asked Mark, could this hinder us for this round for this year?
And I don't have that, and I have a little, I don't know, I don't know if it only extends to, you know, grants that that MassDOT has some jurisdiction. And I don't know if it extends to MoD for, you know, for disability grants, you know? Does it impact our, um, our green communities grants at the thing? Right? So I I'm going to say that hopefully, you know, whatever it is, is is the focus is narrow. But my point was that I, that I, just to finish the thought I was, um, I started to make earlier, was hopefully that this committee can work in parallel while the investigation is going on, so that really you're going to continue moving forward on this. Um, and then, you know, the committee has has got something, an idea to galvanize around when work is ready to begin.
The park, does the NBT A community, uh, grant thing limitation affect us in any of this, is connected if we, for example, don't move forward on that one, pass the test on that in terms of zoning overlay or whatever for the houses? Is that something that trumps MassDOT grants as well?
I I think it probably would have some level of importance.
That's what I thought I was hearing when I listened to the DHC D people frankly, so they have several layers of protections here.
I don't, I don't know, you know, I'll be honest, I don't know the limitations of comment, which is really why.
Yeah.
I've asked for that, you know, I've asked as Miss Cook is, you know, I I've asked for that in writing, so that I can understand, you know, get at that point clarified. There's a comment that was made and I I need to understand what exactly is meant by it.
I think you're right, I think sort of keep going with the planning process as rapidly as you can. Push the, the date project to.
So should we talk about that, um, charge?
Sure, okay, so there's the draft, a red line version in the packet. There's one, um, red line edit that I forgot to make and I just think that, and the second line, which is to. There's one, um, red line edit that I forgot to make and I just think that in the second line, which is to generate a written recommendation, right? And just a oral recommendation. Okay. So basically, the first charge was more narrow to fill the circular space in the center. This is broader for the design of beams for the proposed park. In terms of the number, this draft has it going from seven to nine and having a representative of the historical commission and one from the open space preservation committee. I sent a draft, I sent this draft to the chairs of those two committees. Um, the intent, to be clear, is that the currently appointed members would continue here, although um, I know that Mr. Blanchard, who was appointed in the kid who is not seeking reemployment. So practically there's really five. Um, so just kind of, um, look, one thing I think maybe for the board to consider is if you wanna go quicker rather than slower. And since the, you know, we, we've had five members right now. If you went to seven and you had, you added a representative of the historical commission, open space commission, preservation mission, that would probably the appointments would probably go quicker rather than particularly as, you know, we go July seventh and then the town here gets tight over the summer, right? And advertising for interest in the summer is, is tough too, but. So I'm kind of, this is the draft that I, I prepared, that I would kind of, I think the board should consider just nine and seven. I know, but Kathy, um, this came up in the advisory committee size right about, you know, your view nine is just not a great number for a committee. Seven is a better number in terms of, cause you have nine, a lot of people just might not show up and then you get a problem with getting four.
You're here.
Mr. Blanchard's statement, yeah. In fact, that was what I thought when I saw Mr. Blanchard was not applying for reappointment.
I'm all for the seven. I think seven's the right number, especially if we get historical to, or historical and open spaces part of the, the seven.
I have a couple of questions. So you're, you're really changing the scope. You're actually designing something now. So I worry about, we don't have any money in a budget for a consultant, which I think at some point is gonna be required because A, you're talking potentially A D A, some engineering. So that, that's quite one concern. My second concern is obviously we talked about getting it done sooner rather than later. So I would be interested in putting a date on this. And then third, I, I, I would leave it at nine and I would look for members within the community with the engineering or the design background that, that may help you guide you in this path. Those are my.
Okay. So just on the first, on the first point, cause Mark and I and Tara had a discussion about this a little bit
Okay.
Earlier today, like exactly a concern about a designing a park by a committee, right? Because this would just, the way I kind of envisioned this, it's just, if there could be a a recommendation, it's just, it's just one page. It's almost both. These are the types of themes. Here's rough ideas about where things could go and then bringing in um, an engineer to go, I think that, you know, the, the term of art was the seventy five percent done plan, right? The first set of plans, the June two thousand twenty one plans were seventy five percent done plans. That, and I mean, Mark can speak to this, is whether there's another funding source that might be able to pay for that, the, the next phase of going from working group, you know, one page of bullet points presented to the select board then to have uh, engineer assist the working group going to maybe even just a couple of different, like here's, here's a different, a couple of different conceptual plans. Form a consensus about a conceptual plan, then we'll do a seventy five percent done plan. And then, then you have a plan that has reflects more community input than did the June two thousand twenty one plans. I mean, another moving part in this is you know, the history walk, that's a really in the wheelhouse of a community preservation act, right? And that's another funding source for that. So those are my ideas. I certainly share your concern. Uh, we do not wanna have actual plans designed by a committee like this.
I just want it to be successful and whatever tools we have to do to make this working group and redesign successful, we need to consider it as we move forward.
I, I think of it as a functional design. I think the committee could do a functional design, say here are the components that we think are important here. And then having, you know, engineer, architect, landscape planner, whatever, yeah, thinking about, yeah, how do you organize the space? So you can support those functions. As, as you suggested, it's a far more technical.
Yeah.
Clearly like to write X.
The last meeting ended with exactly that, Mr. Science. It's just a handwritten um, sketch that has you know, ideas about where different components could go, but obviously you can't design off of that.
I mean, Andrew, I'm, I'm willing to, to certainly support moving forward because there's work that has to be done. I just think the nine isn't a bad idea because you may be, again, you may be able to get someone that you're looking for. Again, you could start with who you have. You have five, so you've got what you need.
Up to nine.
Up to nine, yeah. And, and specifically put a call out for whether it be an engineer, an architect, whatever. We've been, look at capital. We're fairly successful.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
If you do up to nine, that means the form's five, right?
Yes, yeah. And it, it gives the board the opportunity to, you know, other interested parties that may come forward that, again, when we put the call out, Vanessa would be happy to do this because she does such a good job at it, you know, looking for something specific. The board just needs to decide, you know, is it an architect? Is it potentially an engineer or a designer? I mean, whatever. You know, I, I think we have a great opportunity. There's a great base. Sammy talked about it all the time. Look through this street listing and and, you know, I think there's great opportunity here. And I look at the golf course master plan, many, many, what, eighteen of us? And, and we really got to a good place. I'm not suggesting eighteen, not by any.
And a key element there was a landscape planner, basically. So, but again, Andrew, good point, but seven people initially, four and a five is probably not an insurmountable barrier.
I like the up to nine in looking for specific people, um, to, to help in the design.
Those are mine. The only other point I had was do we wanna put obviously at least a date for them to try to have a plan. Granted, some of the stuff isn't gonna happen this beginning of the next year. We know it. You know, the plantings and stuff, but if we give them just enough time to, to put something together, then hopefully in the spring, we can hit the ground running. We can do whatever we need to do to move forward.
So is this deadline for, again, the simple phase would be literally just a one page document, maybe just a hand sketch. So would that be for that? And then knowing that the next phase would be to move to then that's where the money part of it would come in.
Yeah. How long do you think it would take Andrew to, to just kind of, is, is Labor Day? Is that enough? I mean, you have a form pretty much now.
Yep.
And you've been meeting, right? So you, so you have ideas that I'm sure have been thrown out.
Yeah.
We haven't met in the last couple of weeks in part because I knew that this was gonna come up and that was gonna make sense to have. There's also since town meeting, maybe we've had one.
Okay.
Maybe two.
So that's two months, two and a half months.
Two months that are in June, July and August. That's a little, I mean, what about September thirtieth?
Perfect. If you think, and again, if you need more time, Andrew, just come back, you know, but at least it sets some, some type of expectation on, yeah, trying to get something.
So then so what, um, first iteration of this went through one draft, then a revised draft was approved with second.
I don't need to see it again with these edits. I mean, you know, again, you put in the date, you're doing nine, we're gonna search for two more. I'm done. I'm, I'm more than happy to approve this tonight and to move forward as editing.
Okay. So the only changes off of this are gonna be second line, written recommendation.
Yes.
Strike, strike through the last sentence, working group shall aim to deliver the recommendation to the select board by September thirty of two thousand twenty two.
Fair enough. And then just add to make it up to nine, not consist of nine.
Initial recommendation, up to nine.
Usually does not like be up to, because then that affects the form.
Normally it's a definitive, it's a definitive number.
I would, I would, I agree with you. I would keep it at nine, knowing that you have, cause your, so your form's still gonna have to be five.
It's just, it's cleaning.
So Andrew, based on what you know that you need to do, who, what type of person would you like us to put a call out for? An engineer, an architect, somebody in the construction trade, maybe a general, um.
Um, okay, so.
Why don't, why doesn't Andrew just send Mark an email with this info in it and give it to us so we can keep going?
Well, I think that this is something that is worth discussing. I mean, I do think that having some emphasis, you know, archi- architecture is, is also engineering. Um, because we're, you know, right now, we, we have representative of library trustees.
Yeah.
Select for, so this historical commission.
Yeah.
Open space, A D A. So then, but none of us are engineers, architects. I mean, this is more for, this is more landscape design than, um, building a building or anything like that. It's just practicalities of how to do something like that.
Civil engineer would have useful information.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Grading, uh, uh, grading, all those kinds of things that you think about.
I think it's easy enough. That's kind of what we're looking for. Vanessa has an idea. Maybe we can get something out tomorrow. And then that's it.
Okay, free consultant.
There you go. That works, Sam.
After personnel award.
Um, do we need to approve the charge?
I think you do.
Margaret has her, I agree.
That's right, okay.
Margaret, you should be able to speak.
Hi, uh, just quickly, cause I know we're all tired. Uh, thank you very much. I hope we, uh, come up with something that everybody loves.
Okay, thanks. Alright, so is there a motion to, um, approve the expanded committee charge for the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group as a
So who?
Second. We'll call them, brush, I, standing.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Aye.
On a D I. Thank you. Okay, um, discussion of process for police chief for proof that. Um, so there is, I think two paths for this one. One would be to, to an internal process. The current membership of the police department. And the second would be, uh, to do an outside process. Um, which would, which is related to the draft, um, search committee. So if we were to do an internal process, we wouldn't have a um, committee for this. And if you were to do an internal process, you would not, hopefully, is that right? Um, so, you know, I think there's, um, pros and cons to both. Um, I think that, you know, we, we've really been, um, um, harping on our public safety departments in particular on having succession plans. I think that's been a big part, um, of this board, at least since I've been on it, is making sure that um, our public safety are, uh, equipped to take over if need be. Um, and I think that you know, we have a lot of seniority in the police department today that, um, probably there's interest within internally to go that route. Um, you know, I think one of the, um, advantages to going outside is you have the opportunity to compare candidates and see what pool exists. There's also disadvantages to that. Um, just, you know, not, had, not having grown up in the department and that kind of thing, but, you know, I think there's pros and cons to both. Um, I think the timeline, um, of going for an internal process obviously would be a lot faster than an external process. Um, and I think there's, um, less, there's, there's just less disruption for the department to do internal. Um, so that's kind of the two paths that I think we can go. Um, so I'll open it up to the board for discussion on those two options and everything to talk about. Of those, thank you.
So I strongly have believed since I've been on the board in succession planning. And I think we've gone down that path and, and that was a pretty big discussion when we met with uh, the fire chiefs contract as well, is making sure we had things in place. I think there are people within the department. I think that I would like to try an internal posting. I think, um, department's been through a lot. I think there's a lot of support within the department to go that way. Um, and I, I, again, I think we have candidates there that have been in town a long time. We understand South Borough. They understand the department. And, um, I get external posting. I understand why we've done it in the past. But I think, um, I personally think we have what we're looking for within the department. So I would certainly, that's just my two cents. I would be more for doing an internal posting and letting the department heal as well.
Okay, so this is a difficult decision. Um, but, you know, one of the things that is one of the first questions I had, are these really inconsistent? There really are two, just two separate paths because obviously if you did an external posting, internal candidates will also be a lot. Okay. But, I mean, one just concern that I have is that this position has really been not filled since February. So it's now June and you know, that's a factor that for me weighs against is the external posting is one. And another thing, the first step would really be before even in addition to having the appointments for the search committee, you'd also need to pick who the consultant would be, right? And then that would be a whole process, again, heading into the summer. Um, I'm just guessing that an external process a decision in like October, November.
Five months, you can probably factor five.
Okay, so that, um, you know, and it doesn't necessarily lead to a, it's a more complicated process, doesn't necessarily lead to a process. So those are my thoughts. I've been listening to what other people have to say too.
I guess I come out who Lisa is, but for a different reason.
That's okay, Stan.
I can stop there. Don't say anything else. Um, I think, uh, I'm not at all compelled by the argument that, uh, we have people who've been here a long time. Uh, I think that for me at least, with, with now imperfect hindsight, I think going outside for both the police chief and the fire chief last night was exactly the right decision. I think we did, did, at least at the time, very well with those decisions. And, uh, however, I think that, uh, the points folks have made about the continuity and disruption are important. Having gone this long without that position fulfilled, I think that it is practically speaking a, a good choice to, uh, do the internal process, see what we come up with, uh, maybe with some external validation for that process with a consultant of some type to, to, uh, provide an external reference on that. Assuming that that answer comes back to say that there is a qualified internal candidate. Um, I'd also like to leave the door open as we get through a transition period to not think about doing a five year deal or something like that as a result of that internal piece.
Yeah, yeah.
To have some sort of, uh, it, it's certainly not interim, but, uh, at least, uh, continuing evaluation. Hopefully that choice could work out very successfully. And turn into a, you know, long-term, very positive decision. But I think there's, I've always believed there's great value in sort of looking around the outside world, see what's out there. And I think we in many ways have an attractive position here. It, uh, could attract some interesting external candidates, just as we've had done in the past. So, so I wind up at the same place, looking internally and seeing if we could find a, a good choice there. I'm assuming that people would be interested in the position. I have no idea that, what, what, I would think that would be the case. And it's certainly inappropriate to ask and see where that goes. And hopefully we could do that within, you know, a couple of months kind of time period. Sort of provide folks with continuous leadership there that.
Kathy, anything else you wanna add to this conversation?
I don't think there's much else to add. I agree with, um, Sam and Lisa, um, and I guess probably Andrew too. Um, yeah, they're not mutually exclusive. We start, I think we start internal and then if it doesn't work out, then we will go, we will broaden our search to external. But let's start internal first. Um, and let's try to, um, um, get this thing going as soon as we can so that we.
Um, and let's try to um, get this thing going as soon as we can so that we minimize the time um, that we're without a chief.
So, um, I think we're all on the same page. Um, so I'm going to suggest a timeline here for us to talk about. Um, I would suggest that Mr. Purple posts the position internally to the police department tomorrow and send a memo to every member of the department, either from you or the board, doesn't matter to me. Just alerting them that we're doing an internal process and to, um, if they're interested, to please send their resume and a letter of interest um, by two weeks from now, which would be June 28th, uh, June 29th, if we're talking about tomorrow. Um, and then we in short order meet as a board to review the applicant, the applicants um, at that time to determine next steps. And um, at the same time that we have the internal posting out that Mr. Purple um, reach out to consultants who do this for a living to explain the process that we're going through and to have them come up with options based on one, two, and three plus candidates and come up with some pricing on how to do a background check, um, reference psychological exam um, and or potentially an assessment center. And then when we get all the candidates in two weeks, then the board can decide the path forward and we at least know what the options are in terms of um, that next step.
I, I'm not sure about the value of the assessment center in this pursuit of circumstance. I think that if we get the right consultant, that individual may well be able to provide that kind of information. Because I, I observed the assessment center process for fire chiefs, which was very helpful because those were folks who were not really known to anybody in town, basically, at that point.
So that's why, that's why I think we need to meet in two weeks.
Yeah.
So that we know.
Yeah.
And then I think we can make that
Yeah.
um, decision on whether that's the right step or not. But I think technically, leave the door open on what, give, give the consultants an opportunity to, to give suggestions and then I think we can cut those.
Yeah, exactly. And if we can make a choice at that time in terms of consultant.
Yes.
Then I think the rest of the process can work very quickly. I doubt that we're going to get, you know, 10 people internally to say,
Yeah.
sign up here.
So Kathy, will you be back? When, you come back on the 20th? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And if we can do that on Zoom, that would be helpful. Or.
We're having a complaint?
No.
Twenty-eight.
No, we posted for two weeks, so. Well, we cut it off on the 28th.
So we meet on the 28th?
Twenty-nine, yeah.
The 29th. On the 29th, Wednesday?
Leave a, leave the opportunity to apply for the 28th and then we meet on the 29th.
All right, you just cut it off on the 27th and we meet on the 28th.
Yeah. Want to meet on the 28th, Kathy?
I would prefer to meet on Tuesday, the 28th than Wednesday, the 29th. But I'm, but it's one person, so let's see what the majority must have did.
I, I was just trying to get the timeframe set up. I wasn't stuck on the dates.
Kathy, are you good with it being Zoom? Yeah, and, and remember, um, we're on our own. Mr. Purple's on vacation. Oh, Ms. Hale will be here though. Yes, she will, so.
You're more than capably covered.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Okay, so the 28th, I'm, I'm fine anytime, just whatever the board.
Six-thirty is a better time for this.
Six-thirty?
Okay.
Six-thirty sounds good to me too. I mean, this is our only agenda item for the 28th.
Right, right. Okay, so do we need to take a vote? Did you say yes? Okay. So is there a motion um, to post an internal position for police chief? Sorry. Is there a motion to? How about you make the motion?
Um, okay, I'll try. I'll give it a whirl.
Okay.
Um, is there a motion to create an internal posting for, within the police department for the position of police chief with a cutoff date of
Letters of interest.
Letters of interest, thank you.
And resume.
And resume by
June 20th.
Junie 27th.
So move.
Okay, roll call vote, Rashia.
Aye.
Dannington.
Was there a second? Was there a second?
Sorry, I thought Sam did.
Oh, because I made the motion.
Right, so you seconded it.
Ultimately, you seconded it.
You said it, okay. Rashia.
Aye.
Dannington.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Alanowski's aye. Okay, thank you. All right, next item is um, the notification of FY22 budget adjustments for our financial policies. Um, so Mr. Sibelli sent us a memo. This actually is below our financial policy, but I think he was just being extremely thorough um, on funds that will need to be used for the salary one and out of the non-salary funds. The second one is related to the fire department. I spoke with him uh, this week and um, he thinks he's going to be okay. Um, but given what we decided to do for June 10th um, and some other items related to overtime and the end of the year, um, he just wanted to put us on notice that he's going to be tight. Um, and hopefully won't be a transfer, but just wanted to let us know. And then the third one is related to DPW for fuel. I think those were unanticipated costs for everyone, um, related to fuel this year. So she's $37,000. And the negative, they're going to need another PO taken out on that before, or another diesel delivery, which they take our PO before the end of the year. Um, and so she is anticipating being able to cover everything within her budget at the bottom line, but not within the individual line items.
Um, so can I go ahead and request, Chelsea? So when you vote on the DPW, I'm going to refuse myself. Okay, because my husband plows for the town, so I never participate in anything to do with the snow removal.
Okay.
So if you could do it separately. And then one other question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. Um, on for the assessors.
Yeah.
So that was a shortage. Why are we not just covering that through? Do we have the funds, Mr. Purple, in our salary line item? Because that person technically was in the board of selectmen. For the deputy assessor.
So I would have to go back and take a look. We did have some shortfalls.
Okay, that's fine then. I just, I thought I would just throw that out.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. So we did, so there was, there was some additional, there was an issue with a longevity payment for the, the same, for the same employee, which was originally budgeted in our budget. So that's being, we're covering that piece.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so are you looking to take votes on these, Chelsea, or just these are notifications?
I do think you need to vote.
Yeah, we do.
So I'm gonna let, I'll, I'll step back there. Before you vote on the DPW, I'm gonna go second that.
I just got a process question because I was a little confused between the difference between the item we're on now, the numeral seven G, and the one up on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Six G. Uh, okay, so your six G is interdepartmental.
Correct.
Funds first.
These are all happening within the, their existing budgets.
Okay, so the IT was an interdepartmental. I thought, I, I thought it was.
No.
Because.
No. No, these are all intro. These are all intro.
Aren't they kind of? It's not, it's not a big deal. I just didn't, I didn't.
I don't see any difference between the IT one and these. They're all intra-department. You're moving it from one light item to the other.
Okay, so really, um, that was right, it really isn't. Whatever. They're all reasonable.
Um, so is there a motion to approve the assessor request and the fire request? If needed, like we're, we're acknowledging that there may be some shifting in life. So is there a motion to approve the shifting as needed for the assessors and fire department?
I see no reason to vote on fire, Chelsea. It hasn't happened. So just vote on assessors. Let, let fire actually happen.
Okay, so is there a motion to support the assessor shift in funds for the FY22 budget?
So move. Second.
Rashia.
Aye.
Dannington.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Alanowski's aye. Okay, and then um, is there a motion to approve the DPW bottom line spend request? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, the DPW. Can you come up, Mimi? Sorry.
On the DPW, what is um, design concepts for a growing wetland on Deerfoot Road? Is that something that the con con should be working on?
I don't know. Um, good question. I don't know the answer. So I think what we could do um, is approve the, the bottom line budget and then get an answer on the, on the deer budget.
What was Mimi looking at?
Uh, the, the memo where it says quarterly budget line item overage. It's like, it's clapped on, on that memo.
So the bottom line budget request.
Is related to the fuel.
If you do the bottom line budget request, you don't need to take anything with this request.
Correct.
Okay. I'm in favor. With the motion?
Yeah, and then we'll just get an answer on the, on the deer budget.
I move the select board approve the bottom line budget request as presented in the DPW superintendent's June 9th memo.
Second. Roll call. Dannington.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Alanowski's aye and Bridget for the minutes, Ms. Rashio abstaining. Um, public comments.
Stop it once more.
That's okay.
So with regards to the discussion about the size of the park committee, Mr. Reddy, with whom I agree most of the time, is a little bit more sensitive on the forum than I am. Just should point out that under the open meeting law, you are allowed in a charge to set form for a committee. So you could have chosen to do up to nine and then specify that the forum should be a majority of the members serving. Personally, I am, but no less than three. But that is the way to have the flexibility without
I actually think that might be something to consider here.
And we need to reopen something, but.
Well, it's your public comments, so we're not going to reopen. Thank you though.
No, you can't do that. You can't reopen.
After public comment.
I, as I don't, no.
Okay.
No.
David, the Marriott 58 Flag Grove. I hope I remember. Um, so I found the, in the conversation very interesting between Mr. Lit and Jay about using the advisory, MTC, as the advisory for IT. And in my head, I've been saying, I really just wish the select board would do that with Karen Galligan and DPW and use the advisory that we have, which is the planning, Public Works Planning Board. So you may know that I tried to speak to Mr. Morris and Mr. Semino about what to do about Public Works Planning Board, not having met in a number of months, years now. And actually, Mr. Dannington, you know, attempted to participate, but it, it wasn't fruitful. So um, you know, after a number of months, I'd like to ask if, um, you know, the board could act and talk with the chair about why he's not meeting. But in any event, um, have that same conversation with Ms. Galligan about using the advisory. I did a public records request and Mr. Purple kindly um, gave a number of documents. I, my, my request was a, a list of projects that the town engineer has done or participated in since the, since we started using VHB, maybe 2019. I think I got about eight or nine projects. Many of these projects are road projects and they're all 2018, 19, 20, 21. And zero of them have gone through Public Works Planning Board. And so tonight, we're talking about Water Tower, we're talking about um, speed on the roads, you know, I previously brought up you know, getting an update on truck exclusion. All these are items that go to Public Works Planning Board. So um, not all of these items can be, you know, covered by capital planning. So yes, it's, that was a great first step, but there's a, there's another piece of it. I think that the public um, you, you know, sentiment about DPW is extremely low right now and we really need oversight. And I think that if we're going to use chapter 447 of the 1991 legislative act, we have to use it 100%. We can't just use the first part for the tree warden and forget about the last part, which is the Public Works Planning Board was set up at the same time CPW as the advisory. So what I'd really like to ask is, can you take on this charge, have this discussion with Ms. Galligan and insist that each of these public works projects come to the advisory group that was set up? And that that should be the group that advises you. So that's my, that's my ask.
Thank you.
Um, I do have another comment. Um, I heard also tonight several, it, um, several times about using an, an engineer. Um, I guess it occurred to me when we're having the water tank conversation, um, talking about an engineer that could be helpful for the St. Mark's Triangle. Um, an engineer who, uh, you know, civil engineer, I don't know, there was something else, you know, tonight. And I brought up also to you that um, it's unclear to me why we don't have a town engineer. Um, at the time, it was sort of headline news that we got rid of our town engineer, but it was um, said to have been sort of a financial decision. Um, when I went back to, to look, I didn't see exactly that. Um, I saw that DPW, at least the meeting minutes, I was looking at that, DPW was asked um, or, or proposed that Karen would replace the town engineer who was a professional engineer, PE, replace it with a town uh, staff engineer. So my understanding is today, we don't even have a staff engineer. Um, and at the time, the uh, Conservation Commission wrote a letter, which I've sent to all of you, where they expressed their dissatisfaction because they rely on a town engineer. So I'd be interested to know if the board would take a look at, um, you know, maybe what we're spending on outside consultants, which we know is always more than an internal person. Um, and I think there's a, you know, just as a comparison, I think we should know, you know, about whether it be um, more economical to have town engineer. Um, but also I think there's more of an open door policy. Um, when I've been looking at websites of, uh, whether it's truck exclusion or other things, I see that um, some towns have, the town engineer has office hours. The town engineer has, um, you know, drop in or call me. I think I said something about Northborough um, and setting up a safety zone by the school, which is something I'd like to propose to you guys, not just looking at truck exclusion, but probably sidewalks and other things. That was the town engineer that was leading that. And I think that right now, Southborough is really in a deficit for having gotten rid of that position. So I, I propose that, you know, if you would please, to take a look at whether, uh, you know, it's not to say we're not going to need external engineers. We are, right? But you need somebody also to oversee their work. If we had a town engineer, for example, maybe that person could drop in on your meeting. I don't, I don't really know. Um, and I have one other comment. I have made some proposed edits to the special municipal employee policy. Um, I went through it, you know, based on the meetings that I've attended over the years. Um, and I'd like to know how to interact with the board on that. I did put in a special rec, um, a public records request um, to find, you know, just really to look at the records, actually. Um, and so since the policy was put into place in 2019, no employee has put in any disclosures, which tells me that either there's something wrong with our policy or there's some non-compliance going on, or it's just an onerous process. Um, so that's kind of peculiar to me and I said, you know, Um, so that's kind of peculiar to me. And I said, you know, well, let me go back. And I remember at the time, the policy was put together, frankly, I think it was, it was a good attempt and Mr. Healy, I think, led it. A lot of the language is boilerplate trauma in Westfield, so I actually found it. So it's pretty much verbatim. But there were a couple of really controversial spots and this Rashio, Mr. Seivers, you participated in that and you pointed out what they were at the time. And I propose that um it's probably a good time to revisit the policy because it's not really working. And as we know, that's a very sensitive spot, having to do with divided loyalties and conflict of interest. Special municipal employees are waived from about twenty different sections of law, but they need to know if they're conflicted. And as residents, we need to know if they're conflicted also. So I've um, I've taken the first crack at it and if it's okay with you, I'd like to send it to the board for consideration. Um, there's a uh renewal every year in July. My proposal would be to rescind all of, all of the groups right now that um haven't shown the need. I think there's about six or something groups. Council, I think I was talking to Andrew about this, Council on Aging, um, uh coal workers, I think, EDC, a bunch of others. But if they don't need it, then we should take it away. And um, in fact, many towns, uh, you have to demonstrate the need to have that special. You know, be- because otherwise it could be uh abuse. But um, I'm not suggesting any of that, but I think I'm leaning more toward, it doesn't appear that it's needed. And so I think that we should take it away. And if it board truly needs it, they should make a presentation and come and demonstrate the need. So um, I've got a lot of work on it. It took me hours actually. Um, but I'd love to send it to you just to see if you would um consider at least some of the changes.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, Mimi's got a book. Because I don't have a memory. So obviously, there's some lack of trust in the DPW. And I think having more transparency would go a long way to rebuilding that trust. And things that have happened, um, like there used to, all tree hearings used to be collaborated hearings and suddenly all tree hearings just stopped and trees were coming down, no hearings, not complying with Mass General laws. The Public Works Planning Board used to meet, suddenly it just stopped and they have met sporadically over the past several years. Two road projects that relocated a road, which according to Mass General are supposed to come to the planning board for a report, did not. I think that if there's moving forward, if the DPW superintendent pays more attention to South Row Code, Mass General Law, and is more transparent, that will go a long way to rebuilding trust. And I would think it would make her job much easier.
Thank you, Mimi, there. Okay, I don't see any other public comment. Um, is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, ten thirty bridge.
Second.
Second.
Second. But Kathy seconded that one.
Rashia.
Aye.
Dunnington.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Alanowski's eye. Thank you. Thanks, Kathy, for being.
Kathy, enjoy the rest of your trip.
Thank you.
Well, the sun's coming up, so I'm not even going to bed, so good, so you guys have a nice sleep.